Selectment meeting for January 25, 2024. It is 6:00 PM and for the first time in a long time, you're starting right on time. If anybody is recording, please let us know. We have to let everybody else in the room know that you're doing that. So you know you are being recorded via WCAT6, our local access network. You're also being presented on Zoom and livestreamed via Facebook. If anybody has any objections to that, I don't know what to say, it's gonna happen. Can I have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, and welcome to our meeting. Okay, first thing on the agenda is discussion on the conditions of three homes in the town brought to the Board from the Board of Health. They had some concerns with three properties. And were all three properties notified?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And just so everybody's aware, you need to identify who you are and what your position is with the town, or if you're a resident with the town, if you're gonna speak, okay? Sir, you're up.
Dan Tivell, Board of Health member, and I am a resident. Couple of the properties you see in front of us, I'm gonna call them blighted because right now they are not inhabited, inhabited right now. But one is not inhabited. It's marked out as total condemnation by the Board of Health. It's an inhabitable against, up to the regulation of 105, 410, 650. Okay? It meets the standards of, we've got the property tied off, posted, signed, the whole nine yards. And that property is located at 200 O'Neill Road in more, I think it's more in West Warren Line, pretty much. The property itself is a single-family residence, set back up on top of the hill. It is not currently livable for humans. The property is infested with rats. The property is also loaded with all kinds of trash. We got called up there for a well-being check with the fire department, they brought me in, and you had to walk literally over piles or across piles of trash just to get through the property. We never made it down, we didn't even bother going into the basement. The whole upper floor was just trashed completely, we had mold growing on the outside of the refrigerator. You could smell the house halfway down the driveway. You can't see the property from the road, it is totally overgrown. We had to force open door in the back of the house because you couldn't get entry into the front door. So the back door is secured right now, but that goes into what I assume is a garage. You can't tell with all of the junk that's in there. And it's, it's not just junk, it's food, it's, it's trash, it's everything. You have spider webs going from one corner of the room clear across to the other side. There are a couple of different elevations in there, we just stayed on the main elevation. We didn't go into the, any of the other elevations. Because it was fruitless to try and put somebody in that position and maybe break their neck going upstairs. So we just covered the first floor. When we came out, I talked with the fire chief and I basically condemned the property on the Board of Health sanitary regulations. We notified the client, or the client, the owner. Not once, but twice. He responded the first time, said he'd take care of the issue. We have not heard anything back from him or seen anything from him since. The lady that was living there was his wife. She has since been, she was the person who were going there for the well-being check. And when they finally found her, she was in Rhode Island with her family. So, right now, the house is not inhabited by anybody.
Okay, do we have anybody here or in Zoom representing O'Neill Road? No? You notified them? Did you get a response back?
I did not. But I am certified it, so it was delivered.
Okay.
The second property would be 38 Elm Street. Okay. We got complaints from neighbors on that property of orders coming from the property. Again, vermin, other vermin rodents, rats coming through their property, basically from the other side, other side of the fence. So I went up and I talked with the neighbors, and then I walked around the perimeter of their property and 38 Elm Street. And 38 Elm Street, again, the issues with that, a pool. Basically, the pool is an in-ground pool, is not maintained at all. The water in the pool is really black. You can see evidence of kids' toys at the pool's edge, which, if they were my kids, I wouldn't be putting them in that water. You don't know what's living in that water, you don't know what kind of diseases in that water right now. Because from what the, the neighbors are saying, there's amphibious creatures coming out of that pool. Could be frogs, could be lizards, could be whatever. Could even be snakes that have all kinds of other types of diseases. Along with the other roads, the mice and the rats that run through there. Walking around the property, there is structural damage to the outside porches and eaves of the house. We sent a correction order to them. They kept the correction order for, I'd say, maybe 30 days, a little bit longer than that, and then sent it back unopened to us. So they didn't respond at all. Since then, we've got a couple more calls from the, the neighbors in the area wanting to know what's going on with the property. Right now, it's gone beyond me. We need to get the building inspector involved with this because there is structural damage to the outside of the property. You can see gaping holes in the roof edges, gaping holes in the sides of the porch at the, at the roof line. Same thing with the garage that's on the property. The fascia board around the top end is all rotted out. And I didn't get into the garage, don't know what's in it. So I know the last time, garage was filled with all kinds of trash. And it was just floor-to-ceiling trash. Right now, I don't know what's in the garage.
So do we have anybody here representing 38 Elm Street? Anybody on Zoom? They've been notified? And my understanding is that property, the owners owe $52,714.10 in back taxes?
Well, I don't know what the total is, though.
That's the total?
Yeah.
So that's as of the 18th, right?
As of today, it's 52, 802, 36.
Not getting cheaper.
I believe 200 has a tax issue too.
Yep. O'Neill Street?
I do know that Elm Street, shortly after we got the unopened correction order back, the electric company went out there and shut the electric off and not paid them. Whether it's been turned back on since, I don't know.
And they, I'm hearing that there's actually a dog at that property now?
There is a dog at that property also, and there is a correction order that says they're not supposed to have any animals at that property.
So, um... You know, with that, that property, obviously, they're not doing anything. They're not upkeeping the property, they haven't paid taxes, they're not following orders. We've done our best to try to help them and correct that, and correct that property, and help them every way we can. But I think the chances are gone now. You know, I think we've done all we can do as a community to try to help them. And, you know, it's not happening.
Right now, as a community, we owe it to the neighbors in that neighborhood to do something with that. The same thing with 200, I mean, the neighbor next door to them, now he's getting rats through his property because of the ongoing issue with 200. So he's gonna start filing all kinds of complaints now.
So, 200 O'Neill, they owe $16,453.85 as of the 18th in back taxes. So there's been no taxes paid for that property in a long time either. Do you guys have any questions?
So we're gonna talk about 24 North Street in this slideshow, but so these other two, they're just kind of set and done, right? They've been condemned?
They haven't been condemned. 200 has been condemned by Board of Health for health reasons. The mortgage, there's still a mortgage on that property by the owner. So mortgage company needs to be informed that there's issues with their property.
So how did these, like, say the 200 O'Neill, how do you clean this up?
Like, what? It's not up to us cleaning it up, it's up to the owners to clean it up.
What if they don't?
If they don't, I don't know what the recourse is, the recourse, I have to go to legal.
So there's nothing we can do?
Nothing right now. I mean, we can, we can slap them with fines, up to $500 a day, until they make the corrections necessary. You're not getting any taxes out of them, you're not gonna get the fines out.
No, but at least the fines show that you're doing something and you're, you're documenting these violations and you're telling them, you're doing everything you can do within your guidance if you hit them with fines. Who knows, it might take one or two fines, and they say, you know something? We're gonna get somebody in there and fix it up and clean it up, we'll take care of it. It might take that. But you gotta remember, if we're gonna have to go to court for this, we have to show we've done our due process and we've done everything within our ability to make sure that we've tried to get that property to good condition where it should be, for where it's healthy again. And that's where you guys, and I would highly recommend, I can't tell you to fine them, but I would highly recommend, start documenting it and start doing the fines. If they can't pay it, they can't pay it. But at least we're documenting it, that we've done everything we can. Because a judge is gonna sit there and say, well, you talked to them, you sent a correction order. What else have you done? Well, we fined them for the past six months, incurring, you know, $20,000 in fines. You know, and they still haven't done anything.
Do the, do the fines go on as a lien?
No, it's a...
Or can we make those leasable?
I don't know, that's something we have to ask the lawyer.
I don't know about that. I know that probably about 20 years ago, I'm carrying...
Ishmael, I'm the tax collector. About 20 years ago, there was another problem property, Board of Health, issues rodents and stuff. I'm not sure if it was Bemis Road or Keys Road. And the Board of Health actually went in and cleaned up the property and they were able to put the cleaning costs on a lien on the property. So that when the town sold the property, then they were able to recoup.
There was, yeah, there was a house on Bemis that was pretty big.
Was it Bemis?
I think so.
I remember the name of the person, I don't necessarily wanna say it, but, yeah, I remember. I think they almost had to raise the house.
Yeah.
200 O'Neill Road really should be raised, I don't think there's any saving there at all. Kind of think animal will do that.
I have spoken to the lady from, she's called before and said, you know, I don't know, you know, with all this Board of Health violations, how you expect me to pay the taxes? I'm like, well, your taxes go back to 2020. Well, COVID for the last three years, and I don't get the impression that she's gonna be...
And you guys haven't, you guys haven't fined her yet?
No.
So that shouldn't be an issue with paying the taxes because you're not taking any money from her at all.
We have threatened the fines, but we haven't actually fined her.
I think she was talking about cleanup costs and stuff, but it doesn't sound like she's, I didn't get the impression that she's gonna be moving to solve this problem at all. Of course, her husband, the property isn't in her husband's name. And I think they're in two different places, yeah, they're in two different places.
Well, you find the actual property owner.
That would be him.
So maybe when he starts receiving some fines...
Well, he's the one we sent the citations to. And he got back to us and said he was gonna respond and take care of it, and that was the under, but he never continued.
Well, I would stop putting a monetary fine to that and start, stop finding him some money. And after a while, if he's paying the fines, that just puts money into our bank where we can sit there and go after and clean the property up. And if we have to, we can clean the property up and put a lien on it for the costs. So you can't sell it anyways. And most likely, the town's gonna end up taking this property eventually anyways. So, but we also don't wanna be taking something that's trashed.
Right.
You know, the more, the longer we leave that trash and, you know, that, the rats and stuff and the other stuff that's going on in that house, it's becoming more and more worthless to us.
Well, you figure by now, you've got no heat in there, you've got water pipes in there, probably broken.
But we have to do something at this point. And I would, I would say progressive. You've already given demand letters, stop hitting them with fines. We can revisit this in, say, two months. And if, if you're still not getting anywhere, and we'll have to look at how to clean up the property. We'll send somebody in, clean up the property. I know we might have to have the sheriff's department go in there and do a inventory of personal property because then they gotta be able to put that property, well, they have to put any valuables in a storage container because you can't just throw all their personal property away because they might turn around and say, you threw away my great-great-grandmother's jewelry.
Yeah.
You know, and we don't want any of that. We don't wanna throw away pictures or anything like that. We just want the trash cleaned up. So, you know, there's a process to go about with that. But I would definitely say, stop hitting them with fines. You know, when somebody, when, when it starts costing somebody in their wallet, they tend to pay attention a little more. So, as far as 38 Elm Street, it's obvious. They're gonna ignore us, they're not gonna pay us, they haven't...
Pretty obvious when they return the correction order unopened.
Well, you, they owe $52,000 in back taxes. And, again, we went in there, removed the dogs from them because we had that whole meeting and ordered the dogs to be removed from the property. Ordered them, not to have dogs. We went to court. The town got a judgment against them because of their pool and the stuff there. They ignored that. They're just not gonna do what they're supposed to be doing to be good neighbors.
You're looking at it from that point, and I agree with you 100%. The other angle that I'm looking at it from is the other residents that have to live around these properties. It's not right for them.
No, but we're gonna look at what we can do with that individual property. And with this one, I would honestly say, it's, it's about time. Take the property. You know, stop putting in the process, take that property because it's way too long now. Anybody else in this town, if they didn't pay their taxes, we'd be going after them. These people haven't paid.
2013, right?
And it's not like they're not working.
Right. So, they're just, they don't wanna pay. And they don't wanna do anything, we've tried to work with them for. We've tried giving them the opportunity to clean up the pool.
Creating a health risk for the other people that are living around it.
Right. And I know, Chief, you've been there?
I've been to all three of these properties.
So 38 Elm Street, what's your recent standing with that property?
I have not, that is the one I haven't, I've probably been to the least, excuse me, animal, void, fire chief. So I had some dealings there, some medical calls, the standard stuff. You know, I know there's dogs on premises now because I've seen the, the person there with dogs. But I have had no recent dealings with them for inspections or anything like that. The last time I was there was probably a good year and a half ago or so. But, you know, I, I know the property well enough to know that there, those issues do exist, yes. O'Neill Road, I was there myself for that call, you know, I've been in the building. There's no exaggeration there. That's, that's, out of all the properties I've been to in my career, that's the worst one I've ever seen. You know, and quite honestly, that's well beyond a sheriff's department thing. That's a serve pro, professional cleaning, safety in, I mean, there's...
Sheriff's Department would just make sure...
No, 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 I understand what you're saying, I mean, to check it out after. But in order to do it safely, that's gonna have to be a professional company that comes in and does that, that cleaning. You're talking mold, feces, and everything else in between in that property. You can't move in it, you physically can't move in it.
It's biohazardy.
It is.
You were mentioning that the food's actually moving?
Moving with rats.
You were walking in?
You could hear, you could hear animals moving throughout the house, everywhere.
Yeah, I think you're getting other things in there too, not just rats, but you probably have raccoons and squirrels and other critters in there.
Well, just the amount of feces in their urine and anything else.
And the amount of food, the garbage it's in there is just drawing them off. And it is a wooded area up there, so who knows what else?
I would prefer the homeowner take care of it. And the only way we can incentivize that is to stop fining the homeowner and see if that gets a little bit of fire under them to get going. But if that doesn't work, we're gonna have to take that one too. Right now, they only own like $16,000 in back taxes, which is significant for a lot of people. But comparable to 38 Elm Street, I think 38 Elm Street's the top of the list because they're blatantly ignoring orders, they're blatantly not paying taxes, and there's also health concerns there. And the other house with 100, 200 O'Neill, if we can get the property owner to clean it up, that resolves our problem. We, we still need to get somebody in there, but I think, give them the chance. We'd also show in court, because when you present it in front of a judge, we fined them. We fined them over the past three, four months, and there's no progress. And I would say, with the fines, give another correction order and say, report back to us in 30 days of the progress.
Well, that's what we told them, and they got nothing.
Again, we gotta start somewhere.
But at least if you're giving them notice...
I'll send out a notice weekly if I have to. I don't care, it's just gonna cost, because it's gonna have to go certified.
That, that's fine. The amount of money it's gonna cost the town to clean it up is gonna be significant. It's gonna be a lot of money. And if we could avoid that, I, I'd rather do that route and give them the opportunity. And then we can go after them for back taxes too. You know, that, that's the next thing on the list of things to do. But right now, let's get the health concern. Because honestly, I don't want the town getting involved in a house that should be condemned in the first place in all that trash because then we're taking on that problem on the taxpayers' money, and then we're gonna have to pay to clean it up and probably tear the house down, and that's gonna be a significant amount of money. If we could do this as cheap as possible while getting it corrected, you know?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go one step further and say that most, all these properties that we're talking about tonight are all owned by outside owners, they're not residents of this community. They're not even residents of this state.
Slumwoods.
38 Elm Street, I think the guy lives there.
38 Elm Street, they lived there.
The other two don't.
The other two.
All right, moving on.
So, you guys good with that?
Yeah.
That so far? Fine for two months? If, you know, I don't know how often you can fine.
It's $500 a day until they start doing stuff.
Costs them a lot of money. So, do what you're gonna get it, do what you're gonna do. I didn't know if there was a restriction where you could only do it up to, you know, three days or, you know, once a week or something like that. But if it's dealing, you know, might wanna, they might wanna get in there and clean it up. And then after the two months, if you've gotten no, no response, no anything, then we'll revisit it and see what we can do. And we'll probably have to get legal involved in that one. You good with that? Do you have anything?
I'm good, but also, just the same way you put together the presentation with pictures and everything, do it for all the properties?
I was gonna do it for all the properties, those are, how do I put? Those two are on a different burner right now. This one that we're coming up to is hot.
My, my point is, you gotta, you know, create your case and document it. And after you do like a PowerPoint presentation like this, save it as a PDF and send it to you, to the board, even to yourself, then it becomes a public record. It's there, the pictures are there, and you can print them up and have a date, and it becomes very powerful.
Enter it into your file.
Right.
All right. So we're good with that? You're good?
Yes, sir.
Did you have anything, Ms. Ferrari, that you went there?
I certainly worked with Dawn, the treasurer, on, on possible tax taking if the board wants, but, you know, look at that for 38 Elm.
Yeah, take it. You good? Yeah, go after that house, I'm done with it. Give them more than enough opportunities, so. All right. 24 North Street?
24 North Street. Okay, 24 North Street is one block that this particular owner has. They also own 18, which is right next door. Haven't been able to get into 18 because nobody's put any complaints forward on 18 yet. But 24, I've gone through three apartments, the commonways, downstairs, the basement, multiple times since May of last year.
Okay, one second. Do we have anybody representing 24 North Street? Anybody on Zoom for 24 North Street? Did you notify them properly?
Yes, I did.
Did you get a response back?
I got it, it said certify, what's delivered.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, so I handed out PowerPoints to you people, the board. Also put it up on the screen here, I don't know who has control of this.
I do.
Okay. If anybody wants copies of the PowerPoint, we have them available upfront, if you want a better handout.
And there's, there's some right here too.
Okay, so you wanna hit the first slide? All right. All right, I can't read that from there. Okay, so this is Unit Three A. Unit Three A is the first apartment that filed complaints with us. We went up there, I made an appointment with them, went up there in May of twenty-three, looked at their issues, and we put together a correction order and sent it off to Bausch Management Company, which is the building maintenance company for Twenty-four North Street. They supposedly collect all the rents and make all the repairs and everything, handle all the complaints, everything for that particular building and the one next door. So when I went up there, this is from this unit here, Three A. The documenting map is the last visit that I did on that property. Does not include the two, well, includes the two previous, because a lot of the same violations are still existing today. So number one is fifty-two B, broken balusters on stairs. Does the condition meet, is it deemed to endanger or materially impair health or safety? Yes, I did mark that as a yes because there are stairs that lead up to the third floor, second floor levels, and there are issues with the stairs and the balusters and lighting on the stairs. We've already had accidents reported by the, by two tenants of falling down the stairs. And most of the people at these elevations, at these units are elderly, they're not younger people. So on timeframe for compliance, I put see below for statement regarding legal action, no further time allowed. I've reached my max with the maintenance company over there, they're not doing the repairs. They've been given an adequate amount of time to do it since May, and right now I'm not allowing them any further time.
So as of right now, Twenty-four North Street owes thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy cents in back taxes.
Okay, Thirty-, Twenty-four North Street and Eighteen North Street are both owned by the same owner, and they're both up for sale, have been visited by numerous realtor companies and other people interested in buying the properties, when they found out the Board of Health was involved, everybody backed out. That's where it sits right now. Now, the owner called, I wanna say a week, two weeks ago now, saying, "All my property, all my complaints have been fixed." Okay, who fixed them? Because I went over there and they're not fixed. And he was notified to be here tonight, he's not here. Four hundred D posting does not meet requirement of twenty square inches. The posting on the, on the regulation states that it has to have the owner's phone number, maintenance company's phone number, twenty-four hours, that is a checked at least twelve, every twelve hours by the people who run the corporation or the owner. Okay, so they can respond back to claims. There has to be a phone number on there, there has to be a name, address, place of contact so they can contact, the tenants can contact the owners or the maintenance people anytime necessary. It has to meet certain regulations, there's certain requirements underneath the regulation. That being, it has to be twenty square inches, large enough for somebody to see. Okay, posted in a common area for everybody to see. Their posting is on the own door into the building, the main, main entry door into the building off of North Street, on the backside in the common hallway, on an eight and a half sheet paper, eight and a half by eleven sheet paper. Does not meet posting regulation. No further time on that, that's been on there since day one. Molded hallways on unit doors, and as we go through this, on each unit, I'll go over the correction order first, then you'll see pictures covered in my mind. Molded hallways on, on walls and on unit doors, it does meet the condition deemed to endanger or materially impair health or safety. Okay, again, no further times being allowed on it. Five hundred eighty-one, mold in common hallway and on unit doors, again, again, same thing, no further time allowed. One ten A one ceiling not impervious to moisture in bathrooms. All the wall surfaces, all the ceiling surfaces have to be impervious to moisture. You have styrofoam ceiling or a drop ceiling like this in the bathrooms, it's literally falling apart. Right over the shower, throughout the entire bathroom.
So question about the mold, have you had the mold tested?
No.
Is it black mold?
It is black mold. There's black mold in some areas and in other areas, there's just regular green mold.
So you have respiratory hazard for seniors?
I have respiratory hazard, and you'll see some of the pictures when we get into it. The mold is actually halfway up the apartment doors, on the outside of the commonway, and people living in these units are on breathing machines, and they're elderly, there's issues here.
So Chief, Chief Mallett, in the case of negligent, so if somebody's not maintaining a building or apartment and knowingly placing a senior citizen in a health situation where it could be dangerous to their health, would that fall under elder use? Chargeable?
I can, I can get, I can look into that and get Tri Valley involved.
It does fall under legal obligation of me as an EMT to deport because I am a mandatory board. It does fall.
See, see if, yeah, if you follow up, see if there's something chargeable offense? Because if they're knowingly putting, you know, seniors in danger, you got people on breathing apparatus, and there's.
I cleared that, but I'll look into it.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, three twenty, insufficient amperage, doesn't meet the regulation six fifty. See below statement, again, no further time. The amperage on the circuit breakers and all the panels that I've been into are ten amps. The minimum requirement is fifteen. And we'll find that there are other issues with electrical as we go through. Five fifty B C one and five fifty F and G, rat road infestation throughout the building, monthly rat road inspections of each unit and documentation of inspections, not being done. Does it meet the regulation for not inhabitable by humans? Yes, it does. Okay, can I condemn the property for that alone? Yes, I can. Okay, no further time. Correction order, you are here by order to correct these violations within the notice timeframe pursuant to one oh five C M hour, course four ten six forty. Ready to comply may result in court action. Board of Health, before the board, warn Board of Health to request a hearing. You must submit a written request to a local health authority within seven days after the date. This order was served. If you request a hearing, all affected parties will be informed of the date, time, place of the hearing, as well as their right to inspect and copy all records concerning the matter to be heard. You have the right to be represented in the hearing. Conditions may exist which will allow the occupant or the residents who exercise legal rights outlined in the notice of occupants' legal rights and responsibilities issued by the Department of Public Health Community Sanitation Program. Note, current tenants are in process of moving out, Three A, I can't access anymore, they're gone. Under four ten six fifty, this residence qualifies as being unfit for human habitation. They cannot rent this out to anybody else from this point on. Potential order for condemnation, order to vacate pending. Due to the number of severity complaints, lack of response from owner or maintenance management company, and re-inspections at this address, the board is referring this to legal department, housing court for further action, the possible condemnation of the building at Twenty-four North Street. Stairs going up to Unit Three A. Balusters, they're broken, breaking away from all the steps, pretty much going up. And you'll see some that you, you'll see the bottom of the baluster in the stair actually in the process of separating and pulling away. This is their fix for lighting, a little tiny solar step light that maybe gets sunlight and maybe it doesn't, and if it doesn't, it doesn't light the stairs. Even if it does, even if it does, there's not enough light there to cover the steel.
Now, that's an exterior stairway, right?
Right. Again, you can see going up, they're separating here, you can see the picture here, starting to separate, nails are pulling right through the wood because the staircase is sinking. Staircases, the stair rises and the tread do not meet current regulation. Okay, again, broken ones, separating up at the top. You can flip through these because a lot of these are just going up the stairs step by step. Okay, you can see the different separations where the stairs start to fall. Again, here, over there, down on this step. Totally missing here, broken, being pulled up up there. Kicked right out here, missing over there. You can see the separations going up, how many are hanging out on the way upstairs?
Is it just seniors in here or are there kids in this?
There are no kids in the building. And these are, everybody up on this level that I saw were seniors, well over sixty years old.
So having that railing is very important because if they lean too much weight on it.
And the right tread depth is important for these people.
But I'm just worried about if they leaned on it, if it would let go.
There was a section like that up here, they did repair that section, they did repair the deck, but that's all they did. This is Two A, and we'll get to that one a little bit later. Okay, bathroom ceiling tiles do not meet regulation. Under here, the kitchen sink in Unit Three A, you can see all the feces inside the kitchen sink. Couple of rat traps in there, but they're not baited. Okay, now, the day, the last date that I went, they were there the day before. They hired them, they came in, I think it was Brahma that came in the day before and went through the basement and took out a five gallon pail full of dead rats. Under more cabinets. Mold coming up the walls in one of the other rooms, missing fire, smoke detector in the main hallway coming into Three A.
Chief, is that in your purview now?
Yeah, I can take a look. Last time I was in this building was, it was a while ago, it was probably the last time it transferred sale. I actually made them put new emergency lighting in the common hallways in the front of the building.
We're gonna get to that too.
All right, so I actually, because they were not working properly, they actually had an electrician come in and put them, put them in to meet code so they could transfer sale the last time I was there.
The missing fire, they, they removed a.
Yeah, I, I can certainly go there, I haven't been there for a while, so I, I could certainly take a look.
Thank you, Chief.
This is a circuit breaker panel in Three A, ten amp breakers. Plug an air conditioner in and it gets hotter than heck in this apartment during the summer months. So I don't mind, I don't begrudge them using the air conditioner, but the ten amp breaker pops as soon as you plug it in. That doesn't meet code of minimum of fifteen. Main entry hallway and stairs. This is the eight and a half by eleven side, should be twenty square. Black mold up against the wall, on the floors, climbing up the wall.
Where is that?
In the main, main common hallway, coming and off of North Street. Apartment door right here, you see the mold climbing up the door, this lady's on a breathing machine.
Is that a rug?
That is a rug. Here you see the stairs, they're going up, the black mold is falling right at the stairs. Emergency light, emergency lights are supposed to come on when the building loses power. Here, the emergency lights are on all the time. When the building loses power, the emergency lights go out.
So there's no battery backup to it?
There's no battery backup and it is improperly wired. Damaged main entry door, you can see this door, they screwed it together, they beat it with hammers. The outside metal on the door is peeling away right off the door. So when this door is actually closed, and you go to open it, you can't open it. And it's the only entry door out of, the entry exit door out of that hallway.
So they can't open it from the inside?
Correct, it gets jammed in that door, when the door starts to swell, it doesn't open. So the fix that they had, you can flip it. You can see the edge of the door right here, all broken up. The fix is to chisel away the door frame or the door jamb. So this door may open. Not a legal switch, a fix for this. And you can see the door frame being cut away. This really made me laugh. Improperly repaired railing from property to sidewalk using spray foam to support the post.
It's not up to code? I think that's code, yeah, spray foam?
Yeah.
Well, that structural spray foam, right?
Yeah.
It should be fire retardant.
It fixes everything.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, those little boards down there held up with the brick that's sitting around the outside of it, it's gonna give you all the support.
Just needs more spray foam.
Did you try it?
Huh?
Did you try it a little bit?
It moves.
They should have used a duct tape.
Yeah. Reinforce the spray foam duct tape.
Two B is off to the side of the building. Their issues, their correction order, one hundred eighty-five, stove and kitchen is still missing front burner, oven handle on outside the door, and oven door internal panel falls off when they open the door. Does it meet the regulation? Yes, it does, no timeframe to move forward. Four hundred D posting does not meet, again, same size, doesn't, doesn't work. Five thirty C and five hundred eighty-one, room next to bathroom, has active water leak from previous core attempt to repair. Previous repair consisted of stuffing a wall candy with napkins and plastering over it. Now, this is right at the ceiling line where it comes into contact with the wall, it's an exterior wall. I'm not sure whether it was coming from the roof that's above or it's leaking in through the brick because the brick on the outside is all, the mortar is all falling out of it.
You can see that in one of the previous pictures.
Yeah, and we'll get to that. We have this physically being stuffed, the videotape of them doing the repair, stuffing the wall with napkins and plastering it.
So they put a flammable item inside the wall then?
Right. But they further compounded the problem.
Yes, Chief.
Can I, I guess, can I just make a request that maybe something from the town or from the Board of Health, an official request be made for the electrical inspector, the building inspector, and myself? And we'll just, I mean, they, Scott should be involved, BJ should be involved.
I have forwarded those on since May.
To who?
Building inspector, electrical, I got nothing.
Okay, so.
I talked to BJ, she did say she was gonna attend this meeting.
By Zoom?
She said by Zoom, is she on Zoom? BJ, you out there?
No.
She had a doctor's appointment today for her surgery.
Well, well, we, you did, I have a just silly question. Can you explain any twenty square inches?
Twenty square inches is the regulation under sanitary code.
That's twenty square inches.
Twenty square inch paper.
That's twenty by twenty, just so it's clear by law, this is twenty square inches.
Right.
Six by four is twenty-four inches.
Twenty by twenty square is what the regular.
So it's twenty by twenty sign.
Right.
Because twenty by twenty is four hundred square inches.
Five A one, mold on wall in the same room as above. Because of all the moisture coming in through that window, through that wall, the leak in the ceiling, all night yards. There's a pocket on the floor that's strapping. There's a pocket on the floor that's trapping moisture. We got mold building up on the walls.
Is there anybody living in that apartment?
Yes, two young couple, it's a young couple. They're looking to get out. And by the way, just so you know, all of the tenants are not paying rent.
I was gonna say, where do these rent go?
Told them to withhold rent payment. I gave them the carpet, their rights under law, what they can do, what they cannot do. So they've got all their money in escrow.
So if we were ordered, if they were ordered, the house to be condemned, the landlord would have to put them up in a hotel.
On his dime.
On his dime. Until it's repaired.
Any of these conditions that I marked, yes, he has to put them up on his name. Five fifty B C one and five fifty F and G, rat rodent infestation throughout the building. Monthly rat rodent inspection of each unit, documentation of inspections, all meets the regulation. No further action. The girl's bedroom, we went up in this bedroom against dropped ceiling tile like this. She pulled it down and it would, her bed got covered with rat feces. They're running through the ceilings, they're running through the walls, they're running everywhere. And they've been notified this time and time and time and time and time again. Five twenty A one, outside support rail, you just saw the picture from that. And it's closest to their apartment, they're the ones that use that, walk away a lot. Doesn't only meet the building code, it doesn't meet the OSHA safety code either.
Quick question. Did any of them have animals in their mouths?
No.
Some dogs or anything, or cats?
I can't say that. Three, two A has cats.
Reason why I ask that is because if they have rodents in the house, the rodent's not gonna go for the traps.
No.
They're gonna go for the, the dog food and the cat food and eat that. And they're gonna be getting fed plenty, so they don't need to go for the traps.
No, three, two A, the owner has, I don't want to say cats, two cats. The same order that went out on three A applies to three, two B. Okay, with the exception that they're not moving out yet. So under fourteen fifty, yes. Here's the stove, the burner's been missing since May twenty-third, or actually before that, when I went in there for the complaint, this was one of the first complaints, is the burner. They've had conversations with the maintenance company time and time and time again, oh yeah, I got it, I'll bring it over, it never gets there.
So it's electric burners, not gas?
Electric burners. In this apartment, the others are gas.
Are they missing any?
No, well, there's a mixture of gas and electric. The two that I were in, the other two, it were glass stoves. Three A, the glass pop stove was completely shattered in pieces. And they finally came in and pulled the whole out, because they're, they're responsible for all of the appliances in the unit. Finally came in after the second visit and took the oven and stove out and replaced it. So that's the burner on this one. This interior panel of the door falls off when they open, when they close the door, it falls into the oven. So when they open the door, it falls back out. Oven door, there's no oven door handle here, open the oven door. They've been notified time and time again and don't seem to be able to find one.
They probably should replace the ceiling.
Right. This is the room off the kitchen where there's an active water leak. Right now, when I was over there, it was actively leaking, you could see the water pouring it. Properly in, improperly repaved the wall. You can see the wall, it's got a bubble in it, the ceiling's got a sag in it right here. It's already ripping away from here. Here's where they cut out these patches and stuffed everything with newspaper, I mean, napkins.
Is that the outside corner?
That is the outside corner of the building. Go for it. So the roof is right there? This is, I believe there's a roof above this.
So the napkins are just sucking up any moisture and water and making a problem?
They're probably all dissolved by now.
It makes it worse.
They've dunked, they were dunking donuts napkins.
Yeah, they're gone.
So, and it's, it's leaking right down the entire wall. Another patch was here, they stuffed that full of napkins. Was coming right down this wall into the carpet right here.
Well, that's because of joint compounds. That's about four feet from the floor, so the joint compound's coming apart because it's still permeated with water.
Okay, here you can see actual, the wet spot that's growing in the floor here. And again, it's coming down here through the, above the damaged area. You can see a little bit more how this bubble is growing out to here now and how much worse the wall is coming. It's all in the water. Sooner or later, that ceiling is just gonna drop.
Yeah.
Ventilation duct in the spare bedroom falling off the wall. Again, their responsibility to take care of it. Ceiling part. Okay, two A, this couple, she has fallen down the stairs that go to her apartment. The back stairs, the external stairs, multiple times. And she can barely walk now as it is. She's gotta be in her seventies. Five seventy C three, molding hallways on walls, on doors, unit doors, common, molding common hallways, stairways and unit doors. They all use the back door or the back entry off the deck instead of going through the main entry because of all the mold right now. They, plus they have that issue with the door. Again, it meets the regulation for non-human habitation.
So I, honestly, I think we've seen a lot here. And you can go on for quite a while longer.
For a lot longer.
And, you know, if you wanna skip through the pictures, we can go through the pictures real quick.
But, blow this away. One thing that is not in pictures that you don't have, because I, I really couldn't get a good picture. The windows are so loose in the frames that they don't stay up. When you pick it up, they slam right back down again. They fall under the code and you'll see five thirty, oh, go back down. Five thirty eight two three A windows not stay open, loosening stash allows drafts into apartment, not weather tight. Five thirty A means you have to have a weather tight seal in the windows. And you don't have that in any of the windows. Matter of fact, the lady in three A, her living room windows, she's gonna open it, the whole frame and everything comes right out of the wall. Her front door that goes over, her door, actually, her second door goes out onto a mini deck. Her front door is the one that goes up the stairs. Okay, her front door was bigger than the door frame, it wouldn't close. I made them change it.
Do I scan through the photos?
Drop ceiling in the top, in the bathroom. You can see the water stain from water leaks above in the shower and bathroom. Not impervious to water, damaged ceiling here. Notice the faucet, although there's spout, the water spout, how corroded it is here. And how the stopper is corroded here. Flip to the next. That's the bottom.
Oh my God.
Completely rotted right out. This plug outlet, when she pulls the plug out, the whole outlet comes out of the wall. Missing window screens, again, goes for weather tight under the regulation. These are the stairs to her apartment. They're broken, they're the wrong tread depth, the wrong riser height. You've got the rises, I mean, the balusters that are pulling out, separating.
Forty-four photos, or forty-four?
Yep.
Alright, so you got a lot there.
A lot there, but there's a lot that's not there also because I could not get good photos.
My question is, why haven't you condemned it?
Because of the people don't have any place to go.
That's the landlord's problem, you have to put them in.
It's the landlord's problem, but I can't physically take them out of the building and put them somewhere. That's my problem.
So how does that work then? I mean, the landlord has to, like, call up and get them a hotel room?
A hotel room, another apartment, whatever, another place to live, and he has to foot the bill.
So we're not gonna do that. Have you start, have you fined them yet?
No. We're trying to work, we've been trying to work with them, I've been giving them time to get this done. But you know what? They're not doing it.
But you can fine them per apartment, per day?
Yep.
So there's four apartments?
Three that I've been to.
Six.
Six total.
So there's six, and they're all bad?
I haven't been in all of them, but I'm consumed, the worst for all of them. I know one of them.
Unless you've seen them all, but if you've seen three.
The first floor apartment, on, on, right on North Street, was a common right to the entry door. Somebody died in that apartment. And they gutted the apartment and that's it, that's all they did, they gutted the apartment. I mean, literally, it's all the way back to the walls, there's nothing in there.
Well, you know of three that you've been in.
Yep.
And that's fifteen hundred dollars per day. They start, start finding them.
Well, this is where I'm, you know, this is why I'm coming to you. We need to fi, I wanna find them.
Yeah.
I'm done working with the, trying to work with the management company, trying to give them the benefit of the doubt that they're doing the job when they're not. And when they, when they do send somebody over, she sends over her husband who comes in complaining, moaning, groaning, I'm not a maintenance guy, I don't know how to fix things, I don't know how to do this, I don't know how to do that. And I get that from all the tenants. Or they'll send somebody over there who doesn't speak English.
So it's Queen's Management?
Queen's Management is the owner.
Out of Worcester.
Roush is the management company out of Westfield.
Well, you'd, you'd be finding the property owner, which is Queen's Management. And I'm sure after a while, they're not getting rent. They owe thirteen thousand dollars in back taxes.
Can't sell the property because all the realtors are backed out because we're involved.
And if you start hitting them with fifteen hundred dollars a day, just to start, and I would demand to see the other apartments. And then you might move up to six apartments that you find them, three thousand dollars a day for.
Well, you got two buildings, so.
And then you had another building to deal with.
The other building, if you look at it, all the point it needs to be done on the outside for the brick. Chimney at the top is leaning way over and I think the next, nice windstorm is gonna take it right down.
So, Mr. Ferrari, you had something?
Well, I mean, for, for the people that, you know, that, you know, the tenants, if you were to condemn the building, I mean, they would, you know, they would take your condemnation to, to housing courts and say, hey, look at the building's been condemned, you know, now the landlord has to, you know, put, put us up. So they would have, you know, they would take that condemnation to the, to the judge.
Would that take?
That's just it, how long is it gonna take?
Because they'd have to be out of there. And honestly, if the health issues are that bad, you got black mold growing up the walls and you got people on, on, you know, breathing equipment. You know, and then the rodent infestation. There's a lot of stuff that, serious health conditions to be limited. The problem is, we do have seniors in there.
Most of them are seniors. Most of them are over their sixties.
Honestly?
Most of them can't have a hard time mobilizing around.
I would, I would condemn it and start hitting them in the pocket, start finding. That, that's, that's your incentive. When people start having to pay fines, it gets their attention. Hate to do it, but you can't have people living in those conditions either.
No, that's, that's why I'm here.
Well, I think you've got our support. Whatever you wanna do.
Well, again, I needed, I needed, I needed the support of everybody here to do that. I can't go out and say, I'm throwing you out. I can't do that. I can condemn the property for the health reasons.
Yeah.
Okay, they're gonna have, the tenant, the owner has to find a place for these people to live.
Yeah.
I can't tell these people, I condemn it today, you're going there tomorrow.
No, I would definitely give up, give the property management company saying, hey, I'm condemning this house, you're gonna have to put these people in. And...
They have that. Where are they?
You mean?
They had that notice sent to them. Where are they?
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, fine them. You know, that's the other thing you can do.
You saw the notice.
I, I don't think, we can't take them out of the house.
That's, that's what my problem is. How do we get the tenants out of there into another facility or place to live on the, on the owner's dime?
Because if we did that, then it would be the responsibility of the town to pay for it, pay for the hotel room.
You see where my dilemma is.
And we're never gonna be able to get the money back because first of all, they're not paying the back taxes.
Now you see where my dilemma is.
No, I'm tracking, I see what's going on. Chief, you had a question? I just wanted to say that I, I confirmed there is a child, at least one child involved in that property. There is, there is a child in one of those apartments. I can talk to you after about it, but there, there is one child.
Cause I haven't seen one child.
There is one child.
So you got children and elders. Yeah, I'm not happy about that at all.
I mean, I've been over there since May and I haven't seen one child.
Maybe you're going in the morning. Maybe you're going in the morning.
No, I go at different times, I don't go.
Sill age child?
Plus I have to make an appointment to go, I can't just walk in, I have to make a twenty-four hour notice.
Can you intervene in some way?
We are doing everything we can.
Okay, you don't need to, just, thank you.
Is the, is the other building this one here?
Yes.
Okay.
How many apartments in that one?
Seven.
Seven in that one?
And if you go to Roush's, the management company's website, they have this so elaborate website, you know, they're all over the country. They do this, they collect rents, they maintain their properties in pristine condition. And then I look at this.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, anybody can make a, a really nice website. Just making sure it happens, so.
And he does have a mortgage on this. Queen does have a mortgage on this.
Well, that's the other thing, you know.
And they're pushing to get this resolved right now because they wanna sell, they want out. And with me involved or the board involved, they can't move, they can't do anything.
Well, if they want, they're gonna have to fix it in the first place anyways.
Right, and that's what I told them, until it's fixed, it's not going anywhere.
If they wanna get out, then come in and fix it and then they can sell it.
Keith Ian, on Queen's Management, have you ever, were you ever able to speak to somebody on the phone?
No.
From them? You can never reach the owner on the phone?
No, I got a phone number, a six four six phone number that they call, can't get through, nothing. And the same thing with the maintenance phone number, when you call them, maybe they'll pick up, maybe they won't. You never know, if half the time you call, they're jumped.
That's Roush, you mean?
That's Roush. And that's a girl, I think her name is Joanna. I'm, I'm, I have a really bad feeling for the tenants in that building. And that's why I'm here tonight. We gotta, we gotta do something to get these people out of there.
I think we're fully on board with applying maximum pressure.
And that's what I wanna do.
Yep, whatever you need to do. I mean, this is unacceptable. I mean, the other two places, well, I mean, I guess the elm is occupied, but the other one isn't, so I see why this one's on the front.
Yeah, this is why I'm on the front for it as well. It's elderly people.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be living in this. What I would actually like to do, what I really thought of today, what I really would like to do is get Roush and her family and move them into one of the apartments and get this guy and their family, put them in there for six months and see how they like living there.
Yep.
So you have our full support on it. I would recommend, fine, fine them, get into those other apartments.
I'm going for the max.
Go, get into the other apartments. Yeah, go, get into the other apartments, let them know you have them.
I can't get in unless they open up to me, I can't just tell them I wanna go in. I have to be invited in.
Can you send them letters or slip something under the door?
You didn't know we lived in the other apartments, right?
Huh?
Is there anybody living in the other apartments?
I don't know, I, I don't know. I know three A's vacant now because they moved out. He knew everybody in the building. So maybe I can contact him, I do have his contact information, so maybe if I get ahold of him, he can contact that.
You may be able to get into the building with the building commissioner. If, 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 if you're gonna condemn that.
We have a, a fill-in? Do you have a fill-in person?
Uh, I don't, uh, I don't know if that, if that, that ever came to fruition.
Because she said she had gotten somebody's fill-in while she was gonna be gone?
She mentioned somebody, but I don't know if that, if, if, if that ever came about, I wanted to have a discussion with her on that.
Okay. The other thing that I'd like to see out of this whole situation is more communication between Board of Health, Electrical, Plumbing, um, Building Inspector. Cause when I send these things out and they don't come back, I'm, I'm stuck.
Yeah, there's no reason that there's no communication.
And where's the Electrical Inspector on this?
That, Electrical is, uh...
If you look at your forms, you can see what's checked off for forward two. You see the Building Inspector's checked off, you see the Electrical Inspector's checked off, but nothing comes, I don't get no, no, no response.
Okay.
Maybe we could have a, a meeting, you know, I could call them.
You should have a meeting.
All those people.
Yeah. Call them in, have a great meeting, set it up with Dan.
With Dan.
And Board of Health, and, you know, go over these property, you know, these problem properties.
They've dragged Sore into this too, or five, five A.
Okay.
Cause that's the other one that's out of the wind.
So, start working it together as a group, fine them. Get ahold of the prop, Queens Management LLC, I wouldn't deal with the property manager, cause, you know, Queens Management might not even know, they might be paying these people to go manage their property.
They are paying the management company to handle everything.
And they might think everything's okay. You know? But if you go with Queens Management and say, hey, just so you know, I'm sure they probably do know the condition.
Oh, I'm sure they know because the realtors have all backed out.
But honestly, the management company's not liable. It's the.
Owner.
Owner of the property that's liable. So I would go to them directly and talk with them. And, you know, if you have to. Eight A Rosemont Road in Worcester. That's where they locate it. You know? Do a meet and greet. Say, hey, I need somebody's number. You know, because you got all these properties that towns about to pay. So.
Alright, well, that was my...
Mr. Conrad?
Joe Conrad, Board of Health. At our last meeting, when he showed us our photos. I was willing to condemn the building that day.
I have the owner of twenty-four North Street on the phone right now, he would like to be put on speaker so he can take corrective actions to this issue.
Sure.
So are you there?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, you're now on speakerphone, you're at the Board of Selectmen's meeting right now. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, you do have the Board of Health here as well as the Fire Department. Um, obviously, I just spoke to you, so we're, we're trying to take some corrective action to make sure that building becomes safe for the tenants, okay?
Absolutely.
How you doing, sir?
You know, I was, uh, I, I was doing well until I heard about all of these issues. I mean, I'm familiar with some of the issues that were brought up, but, uh, but I, I would love to hear what's going on and, uh, and I do have a property manager.
So you, do you, do you own Queens Management?
Yes, I do, absolutely.
So there's several, um, conditions with your property. Can you just say us your, your name is?
Sure, my, my first name is Jahan, spelled J-A-H-A-N, last name is Habib, spelled H-A-B-I-B.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we, we've been having a meeting. You guys were notified that we were gonna have this meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health. The Fire Department and the Police Department's also here too. As part of this meeting. We were just shown several pictures of this property that you have. And there's several, um, senior citizens that are living in this property, and a child that's living in this property. And there's some serious health conditions that the Board of Health is bringing to us. We also know that you guys owe thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy cents in back taxes, which needs to be resolved. Okay? And along with all these other health issues. Um, at this point, I think the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen are pretty much done. As far as, uh, what, what needs to be done over there, we are pretty well convinced that the house should be condemned, that property. And that means you're gonna be put on the, on, uh, you know, basically, you're gonna be the one paying for all these people to go into hotels. Until the conditions are resolved. Are you able to do that? Are you able to set up your residence and hotels?
Sir, sir, may, may I, may I just, uh, may I just mention that this is, this, obviously, this is a very serious matter, and I understand the gravity of the matter, but, I, I can, I, you know, I don't want to, uh, I, I don't want to mention that, uh, that I have not been, I have been notified on certain violations. I was not aware of the, the gravity of the violations, and all I'm asking for, for the esteemed Select Board as well as the, the departments available, just is to give me some time, uh, to ensure that I can correct all these violations. I've had a property management company that had allegedly corrected these violations, but it's clear that, that, that has not been done. And I can assure you, I can assure you all, that I have every intention, if I, if I have one week or two weeks just to, just to correct all those, any and all violations that have been listed, I can, I can certainly deliver on that, I will take care of it myself, meaning hiring, hiring the necessary tradespeople to take care of this matter. And the last thing I want to do is for the building to be condemned. Uh, I truly value, I would like to be able to get this building in, in, in proper, proper habitable condition. I'm fully committed to that, in fact, I have sent several emails and tried, tried to understand what the status of, of the, of the building was. You know, I can send all the emails that I've sent over to find out where, where did things stand, and I have not received any responses directly to my emails.
We're gonna, we're gonna give you, you're gonna give us your direct email address.
Yes, sir.
If you can give that, the one that goes to you, not this property management company, because we wanna contact you directly. Because contacting the property management isn't getting anything done. And we're honestly cut up, and what we've seen today, we're pretty disgusted by this.
I, I am equally troubled, uh, if, you know, I'm happy to provide my, my personal email address. And I can absolutely, absolutely assure you that every single issue that has been identified will be rectified. Provided that I, I, I can be informed of, of what, what, you know, what the issues are and what needs to be, what needs to be corrected. And, uh, I can have, I can have folks go in there tomorrow, as early as tomorrow, as long as I have, I know I have the list of items that need to be corrected, and take care of this matter, so.
So what's your, what's your email address, sir?
We, we don't wanna do that.
My personal email address is my first name, so that's Khan, J-A-H-A-N, dot, so that's a period. My last name, it's H-A-B-I-B, so it's boy, equal, boy, at gmail dot com.
Okay, Board of Health's gonna send that right over to you and get that information to you. We're gonna give you two weeks to correct this.
Thank you.
As of, as of today, okay? Um, Board of Health agrees to that. Does Board of Health agree to that?
Yep.
So Board of Health agrees to that too. So you're gonna have two weeks.
February eighth.
So if we don't get that corrected by our next, uh, by the Selectmen's meeting on February eighth? By February eighth, and the Board of Health says something different to us and it's not fully corrected, then we will, um, take action from there. Okay? And right now, from what we've seen, there's serious health conditions and potential, um, abuse over there of the residents. You have a young child in that house, and you have some, um, people on ventilators, and there's black mold present in that house. So you're gonna be able to take care of all that, along with the rodents?
Absolutely, absolutely.
This, this has to be?
I will make sure of, sure.
So everything has to be professionally done, and you need to notify the Building Department and work with them. Because there's, there's smoke detectors that are removed, and I can tell you right now, the Fire Chief is not happy right now. So he's probably gonna be paying you a visit because he's pacing right now, wanting to get into that house. So, you might wanna correct all these actions. And also?
Absolutely.
Also, are you aware you owe thirteen thousand, se, well, thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy cents in back taxes on that one property?
I, I was aware that I owe seven thousand, but that was the last, the last I've...
Well, I'm telling you what you owe.
I will absolutely take care of that too, but with, with everyone's consent, I would like to make sure that I take care of the, the, uh, the Board of Health matters and the, the fire safety matters first, because obviously, I don't want the, uh, the health and, well, being of the tenants to be impacted in any way. Therefore, uh, I would like to address those first by the deadline, and then after that, I can take care of the, the taxes.
Well, that's something you're gonna have to talk with the tax collector about, I'm just making you aware of that. And if it progresses any further, we're most likely gonna start going after your property, to take the property.
I understand. I'm gonna also look at a new, uh, new property management firm.
That's a probably a good idea.
I'm sorry, sir.
I said, that's probably a good idea.
Right. I will also take care of these items, um, please, uh, make sure that, as long as, as long as they receive the email, I will, with the, with the items that are listed, I will take quick action on that. And, um, I'm happy to keep all the relevant departments updated as, as things progress.
So, um, the individual that's gonna be inspecting the building for the Board of Health, his name is Dan Dibode. And I got a, a phone number for him, for you to call. So you can notify him and make sure everything falls through. And I can tell you right now, his patience is done with you, so I would definitely give him a call and get this done. You ready to copy his number?
I'm on the road, I am driving, if it's possible to receive that over email, I will absolutely give him a call as soon as I can.
We'll send, we'll have him send you an email, so.
That would be terrific.
Phone number, please.
I am not, I, I am not aware, I was not aware of all, all the details, but, uh, but I do appreciate the opportunity to rectify the situation, and we'll be, we'll be sure that, I will personally ensure that the rectification process is here, uh, and, uh, I will select a new property manager as far as that can take care of these matters before they get out of hand, to the extent that we have. And I apologize to everyone, uh, everyone who's listening on the call, that this is not the way I conduct business. I have been, uh, I've been, I take responsibility for not following up and not being, not being remiss in, in getting the details and confirmation. So I will take care of this matter on my own.
Okay, um, we look forward to you making those repairs and getting everything up to code. Getting rid of those rodents and getting that mold removed from that building. So you have those residents living in there safely.
Absolutely.
That's also my goal, and I, I truly, truly apologize.
And also the stairs. So you're gonna have a long list of many things that are in there. Also, also, Board of Health will require access to those other apartments also. So you, in that building, so you have six apartments, so they're gonna need to get in there, if you're good with that, to inspect the other apartments? In both buildings you own, because you own another building adjacent to that too, right?
Yes, that, that's a, that's a different, under a different, uh, entity.
Yeah, you own, was it eighteen North Street?
Yes, that's right.
So they're gonna need to get in there and look at that too, to make sure the conditions are being kept. We're very concerned about our residents. Uh, just so you're aware, um, at this point, if we don't get response back in two weeks that everything's been repaired, the Board of Health is gonna find you, um, find you five hundred dollars a day per apartment. And you're gonna have to move those residents out of the buildings.
I understand, and, uh, I strongly would like to avoid any of those, uh, those fines, as well as, as well as, uh, having the residences move out of their, their homes, and, uh, I will make sure that the repairs are, repairs are conducted. And one other item I wanted to mention is that I can also provide, once the repairs are completed, I can provide photographic evidence as well to indicate that that's been completed.
Well, we're also gonna have our own people go in there to make sure. We, we, you know, I'm sure you're a nice guy, and you didn't know what was going on, but we're gonna, you know, as Ronald Reagan says, trust but verify. So we're gonna verify everything you do.
You look to her, if I, however, as, as the person being, I could ask.
And make sure they, yeah, make sure they all pull permits, because they have, they're gonna have to pull permits to do all this work. Because we wanna make sure everything's inspected and done properly.
Of course, of course, absolutely, absolutely, I will make sure of that as well.
Alright, um, so two weeks, and we'll get a status update. And, you know, hopefully, um, you have plenty of time to get all that fixed. Is there anything else?
Absolutely, 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 I will make sure of that and ensure that, uh, this, this situation does not occur ever again.
Okay, the Fire Chief wants to talk to you a little more?
So, sir, I appreciate your co, I appreciate your cooperation with this, we will, you know, I will talk to the Board of Health and, and work with them on this issue. Just keep in mind, again, eighteen North Street is also up for sale, which means that in order for that, that sale to, um, that property transfer, we're gonna have to do a fire safety inspection in there anyways and make sure that the emergency systems are working, the smoke detectors. So it would be in your best interest to make sure that we do get in there as well, so that we can see the condition of that building. It's been a while since I've been in there with myself. So as long as we keep moving, you know, in the positive direction, that's what we're looking for, the cooperation, I appreciate you answering tonight and taking care of this, because there are, you know, elderly folks as well as children involved, so, um, so I'll be in touch, this is my, that's my cell phone number that you have tonight. If there's any questions, please reach out to me, but you will be receiving an email from the Board of Health, okay?
Do you have any?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, um, just one, one additional item I wanted to mention is that, uh, my, the current property manager that I have, I'm going to be replacing with a new one, uh, so, uh, you know, I want to make sure that, uh, the, the new property management company has the opportunity to do their own inspections and, uh, make sure that everything, you know, everything that needs to be rectified is rectified, because quite honestly, I, I have not, I have not, you know, aware of all the details of the issues. And also, I wanted to mention, if, with, with the selection of a new property management firm, I do need thirty days to, to do that, because I'm contracted obligated to keep my property manager for thirty days, thirty, basically, a thirty-day notice prior to switching over. So I just wanted to mention that for the, uh, for the record and for the benefit of, uh, of those, uh, those on this call.
Yeah, and I understand that, you know, I mean, doesn't mean, I mean, you have to give them notice, I get that, doesn't mean you can't get another, you know, other licensed people in there to do stuff in the meantime, um, you know?
Of course, sure.
Obviously, those corrections, you know, we're, we're looking to make sure that things are being done. I mean, we'll, we'll work with you as long as you continue to work with us and, and, and make sure that, that, you know, it moves in a positive direction. But there's, there's very clearly a lot of safety violations in there, um, you know, that involve both electrical, structural, and, and, and other things. So, you know, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, but, you know, right now, we're looking to, to make sure that we have the, you know, your word that you're gonna handle things on your end.
Absolutely. You're my word, I will, I will do whatever's necessary to ensure that the safety and habitability units are, is maintained. And, uh, I do appreciate the opportunity to, um, to, to speak and also, and also be able to rectify these, these issues, because this is, uh, this is a serious matter, and I will take it as such.
Alright, well, thank you for returning my phone call so quickly.
Of course, my, my pleasure, and I wanna thank everyone for their consideration, and, uh, I'll get started as soon as I can.
Alright, thank you, sir, and just remember, two weeks. Two weeks.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, take care.
We'll see. If not, fine, fine, fine.
I think it's fair warning at this point.
We got the guy's number now, and he, he's well aware that he's gonna have to put him on hotels if he can't get it fixed. So, hopefully, we see somebody going in there tomorrow to get things done.
You got our notification? You got my notification?
Well, now we talked to him. We'll give him the two weeks. If not, it's recorded. And maximum pressure after that. But again, I'd like them to take care of it, so we don't have to take care of it. So we'll give them the two weeks and go from there. And our next meeting, just make sure this is a follow-up meeting on, on that one. And, um, if you could follow up with us in the two weeks. And I would suggest getting with the rest of the building departments and making sure that they're on board too, because, again, we all need to be working together.
If I make a recommendation, it's for a reason. It's not just to get somebody to leave their house. There's a reason behind it. And usually when I make a recommendation, you have the documentation. There's no reason for you not to respond.
No, and, you know, as far as the building departments, we'll work with you on that and we'll make sure. I don't know why people aren't responding back to board of health.
I took this job as a volunteer, because I thought it was a volunteer position. I said, "Oh," it was like...
No town, no job in this town is volunteer.
That's right. Took it as. And it's mushroomed it more than that.
And you're doing a great job and we really appreciate it too.
When I do it, I do it, I always put my best foot forward. If I'm not, if we're gonna do it, I'm gonna do it whole off. I'm not gonna half-ass it.
And you guys have a full support on these? We have a plan for three separate properties.
More than we had before.
Yeah, and we're gonna have to take an official vote on the one property on Thirty-Eighth Elm Street. If we're gonna do, proceed to...
So, Dan, you're gonna send them the PowerPoint?
I'm gonna send them the PowerPoint, um, and I'm gonna send them my contact information. Um, 'cause I want to be over there and look at, I'm, I'm gonna notify all the tenants outright that this is gonna happen. And let them know to expect people coming into the building to make repairs.
And if you could just let the chief know too, keep him in...
I'll, I'll follow up. Well, I'll work with Dan on this, yep. And, um, CC Jim, just so we, we stay in the loop, and there's a second town official in the loop all the time.
Yeah, well, that's, that was why I brought this this way, because it needed, it was getting bigger than I am, so...
No, we'll get it done, we'll get it done together. And then taxes, you're already working that, right?
Well, you've got the email. Can, can you prepare another bill and...
Well, I can send him bills, you know, all day long. I just sent him another bill, you know.
Send him another one.
Well, apparently he thinks he only owes seven thousand dollars, so...
Well, well, actually, two, two thousand of that totally, you have his sewer charges for this year, so that's not, that part's not really behind yet.
For the, for the PowerPoint, remember to change the twenty by twenty-inch sign?
The forty, the forty.
And... Twenty inches by twenty inches.
I thought I did that in the document.
It says twenty-inch square, so this is a twenty-inch square.
Yeah, that was his point.
Yeah.
Twenty inches.
You know they're gonna, they're gonna catch you on that, like, "Oh, yeah, it's twenty square inches."
The other one is, just look at how when you refer, the stairs are not up to code. If the building, it's old and it hasn't been anything, any permits or modifications to change something, they're grandfathered until they have...
They're grandfathered until they stop falling apart.
Yeah, but they have to ask for permits.
Now they're unsafe.
Right now, and I know, I'm in the building industry professionally. I know what the codes are. I know when they have to be replaced, okay? I know the grandfathering clauses for this, and I do a lot of structural, steel buildings, power plants, all that crap. So I know what the codes are.
Good.
And if I, if I'm gonna cite, cite the code to you, if I'm gonna tell you it's a code violation, it's code violation.
Okay. It's funny, I, I got curious about the website. I searched it, couldn't find it. Then I searched the address, and it's a house.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's like a home business or something, I don't know. We had the hardest time finding Queens' manager. It always came up as something else.
Well, we know people that know people.
I did a deed search. That's how I found, a deed search. That's how I found.
Well, I went through data, the, uh, the internet website, try and look for, because I took all the information out of the building that I had and it was, it kept coming up to something else. And the first couple that we sent out came back, uh, wrong address, you know?
All right, so we have a plan. So Twenty-four North Street, we're given two weeks, okay, on that one. Two hundred Elm, uh...
No, two hundred O'Neill.
Oh, two hundred O'Neill. You're gonna find...
I'm gonna find them.
And then two months, follow up with us. If you're not getting anything, anything responded, uh, then we'll go to the next step on that one. That's just gonna cost the town a lot of money if we have to go in there.
Do we wanna go, um, back to the initial visit and start fighting for them?
Whatever your regulation is, that's you guys' award. That's you guys' award.
I can fight from day one.
Again, I would say that's you guys' award to decide what you're gonna do with that. I think it would be prudent to do what you, whatever you have in your ability to do. And, you know, get that...
I would make a suggestion that you may consider finding from the response from the letter stating that they were going to...
Yes, that's the first one that they got.
Oh, okay. Thinking that from our initial visit. Okay, my apologies.
Yeah, that's when they should've started doing some sort of actions, taking actions. That, that would be the time.
Okay. So you guys good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Thirty-Eighth Elm Street now. We're gonna have to do a motion to...
Condemning or...
No, that, that one's to, um...
Tax title.
Tax title. Um, passing it to the...
Treasurer.
Treasurer for tax title and taking, you know, starting the process to take that property. It is most likely gonna take a couple of years, but we need to start at some point.
Okay.
So...
So what is our motion?
The motion would be to send a memo to the, to the treasurer to notify that the board's intent to, um, to start the tax taking, tax title-taking proceed, process.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you.
We got a plan.
That's all right. It's important.
Well, thank you, thank you very much and thank you for looking out for, um, for the residents. All right, moving on. Discussion on amendment of manager for the Saint Stanus Law Society of West Warren, anticipated vote. Okay. So what's going on here?
The person that was the manager over there is no longer, so they voted on a new one. In order for A, B, C, C to, okay, we have to have a vote on it.
Okay.
Since we're licensing it. They've already voted, they've already won it. They're good.
All right, let's do a motion.
I have all the information.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept Todd A Baldwin as manager of Saint Stanus Law Society of West Warren.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on. Discussion on appointing Kathy Abdorn...
Odian.
Odian, uh, to the Warren Cultural Council, anticipated vote. You guys have any objections?
Nope. Make a motion to appoint Kathy Odian to the Warren Cultural Council for a three-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Superintendent Duff, report on regional school district. How you doing, sir? Thank you for being very patient with us.
So I'm here to provide a budget update. We've been meeting with the budget subcommittee on a regular basis. These are our meetings. We have, uh, representation from the town there. We've met with all of our departments, with the line items that our departments can't control. Those are line items regarding supplies and materials and things like that. Salaries are contractual, as you know, within the town, your salaries are your salaries, your healthcare are your healthcare. Um, I'm happy to report that within the line items that are within our department's control, our overall budget, and this isn't the budget including salaries or healthcare, which we'll get to on Monday night, was an increase of one percent over the last year. That's not what the overall budget is gonna be, because once you factor in salaries and healthcare, um, that's, the budget's gonna increase. That's just the way that, that piece goes. Um, I did report to the board of selectmen that we would be holding a preliminary budget, uh, subcommittee meeting on February fifth. And I'll present the preliminary budget to the budget subcommittee meeting. And then on February twelfth, I'm gonna present our preliminary budget to the full, uh, school committee. At that time, I'm more than happy to come to the board of selectmen's meeting or, um, advisory council or, um, finance board and present our budget to you, just so that you have some time to digest it. My goal is not to have a school committee approved budget until March, uh, so that everybody, if there's questions that people have and there's things that we can work in between February twelfth and March eighteen. Our goal, and we've been as transparent as we can during these meetings with our line items and everything else, our goal is to present a budget that is the budget that we need, we need moving forward. Um, I'm not adding positions that are nice positions to have. I mean, there are positions that we, you know, we do need, but we have to be fiscally responsible. So we've been working very hard on that. Um, I'll have a better idea Monday night, exactly where we are preliminary with the bottom line. Um, and then we'll do some tweaking between Monday night and the following Monday at the budget subcommittee meeting. And then we'll present a full, uh, full, um, preliminary budget to the full school committee on the twelfth of February.
So when will we have a budget?
February twelfth.
February twelfth.
Well, you'll have, you will have a budget after the March eighteenth. You'll have a...
But when are you gonna have the...
You'll have the certified budget after the March eighteenth number, but you will have the preliminary budget on February twelfth, which I'm happy to come to the, to the town and present. I'm guessing that that will very likely be what the March eighteenth budget will be, but that's for the school committee to approve. If they see things in areas that, hey, we may need this, or hey, we can reduce that. Um, we're working very closely, um, with that budget subcommittee. And we've had several meetings to discuss where we're at, what our needs are.
Sounds good.
So you're having meetings the twenty-ninth, the fifth, the twelfth?
So I have a meeting on the twenty-ninth, the fifth, and the, the fifth is a preliminary budget re, uh, presentation to the budget subcommittee meeting, uh, the budget subcommittee. And then we'll move that presentation to the full sc- school committee on February twelfth.
And all those are six-thirty?
All those are at six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay.
Yep, so we've already had three, three sub, budget subcommittee meetings already, um, to discuss those line items and where we're at. So we've been going through it, um, and being, as I, as I say, as financially responsible as we can be. Um, there are things that clearly are out of our control, um, you know, when you come to salaries and healthcare and what the government's numbers might look like.
Now, you guys are gonna start doing a capital improvement plan too?
Yep, we are. I gave you our three asks at the last time I came to the, um, to the meeting here. There are some things, you know, I, and I, we might've talked about it at the last meeting. Um, at some point, Quaybog's gonna need a roof. We are two years away from, uh, MSBA project on that. We did an MSBA project, um, on the elementary school. We did the doors and windows. Gosh, it must be six or seven years ago now. We're trying to hold out for MSBA for the roof at Quaybog, 'cause that's gonna be an expensive one. And if we can get any seventy-five, eighty percent from MSBA, that's gonna be very helpful to the town. We're also looking to do an MSBA project at Westbrook Field Elementary School for their doors and windows, which is outside of Warren, I understand that. Um, but know that we're pushing this out as far as we can to try to be mindful about where that revenue or where, where that money's gonna come from, um, so...
So you're aware we do have a capital improvement plan committee now?
That's excellent.
So that's been established, so with that, I would suggest getting those ones to them.
Yep.
And estimated costs of what you predict those to be. Uh, so they can stop preparing for that and putting money towards that and then elevating it. My understanding is there's a, a structure of priority, what, how prior, um, what the priority would be for that particular item. So I, I would definitely work with them, uh, to do that also.
Town administrator Ferrera, if you want to send me the email for that, I did provide you with it at our last meeting with the, which ones were the top priorities. Uh, there were three of them, um, so in those projects...
There's a lot of projects in this town that need to be, a lot of neglect over years, so...
And what we try to do is we try to find different grant opportunities, as I know that you guys do as well, um, in different MSBA projects, so we can offset the cost of that. So we'll continue to do that, particularly through the MSBA for our bigger projects like the roof or doors and windows in Westbrook Field. Um, you do know that we have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, grant for the control system at Quaybog, which is somewhat similar to the grant that we did and we just completed. We had our state inspection last week with, uh, town administrator Ferrera, the state and Mr. Estrella, um, and they were very pleased with the work. Um, we talked a little bit about that. The three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant opportunity for the IBAC program at Quaybog is all grant-funded. There's no, uh, payback on that. There's, uh, no on-bill repayment. That's just a grant to upgrade, uh, to make us greener. We did get a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for a lighting incentive at Quaybog. Um, that is a hundred percent OBR, uh, which is the on-bill repayment. Our electric bill will not go up, it'll stay the same, it'll decrease. We're gonna do that in two phases. Um, the first phase will be all interior lights. So they'll change every interior light at Quaybog. Phase two will be all the exterior lights. Uh, it was a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. We had seventy thousand dollars in incentives, which gives the cost of two-hundred-and-thirty thousand spread out over five years, will be the same or less than we're paying on our electric bill right now. And then after five years, we'll realize about a forty-five-thousand-dollar savings per year. So once again, we're looking for ways to, uh, save the district some money. Warren Elementary qualifies for a lighting incentive as well. We met with National Grid on Martin Luther King Day. We were out at the school. They did their walkthrough. I think that project's probably gonna come in around two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which would be a hundred percent OBR, um, which will be very nice. So once again, not costing the town or the district any money, keeping our electric bill either at the same or lower cost than it currently is. Um, and that will have a huge payoff as we move forward, which is very exciting. Uh, we did do a building envelope, uh, project with Green Communities at Westbrook Field Elementary School. We get thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars for that, which is all being paid for. And we're doing a lighting incentive like we did with the Green Communities here. But we're doing a Green Communities project at Westbrook Field Elementary School to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars, which is a hundred percent OBR on that one as well, so not costing the district any money. Uh, I want to thank the board of selectmen, uh, town administrator Ferrera, for helping out with the generator. The, you know, I know it was a little north of three thousand dollars, um, but that generator is now functioning properly. And, you know, if we ever needed an emergency shelter, we can run our showers, we can run the full kitchen. Missy Mansfield, our food service director, the last time we ran it, um, she did a great job of coming in and preparing meals for anybody that came in. So that gives us the opportunity to support our community with your help as well, to make sure that the generator is up and functioning. So thank you very much for your assistance with that.
You're welcome.
We did a, a dinner, a senior citizens dinner dance, uh, last weekend. Uh, we didn't have as much participation as we would've liked, um, but it was nice to have some senior citizens into the school. Uh, we did a little bit of dancing, had a nice Italian meal. It was free of charge to our senior citizens. We do have, on February tenth, we have the Adams Family Production that the Quaybog Theater Program is running. And there will be flyers sent out to both senior citizens, uh, senior centers in Warren and in Westbrook Field. Um, it will be free of charge. They'll have a dinner and a show, um, for the first fifty or sixty people that sign up for it. Um, and if need be, we will provide transportation with one of the vans that we were able to get during COVID for, um, transportation. Um, so that'll be going out. I invite any senior citizens to hop on this. Uh, come out, have a nice Italian meal, and then we'll go see a show, which will be great.
You don't think I need a bus there yet?
No.
With my, you borrow my hair, Dave. So once again, we'll be doing that on February tenth. And the last piece is the safety committee. I'll always bring this back to, uh, the board of selectmen and the town administrator. The safety committee meets on a regular basis. We meet on a monthly basis with Chief LeBoix, Chief Mallett, Chief Haglund, Chief Lapierre, with the state police, uh, with Mr. Urban, um, and we talk about what are the next steps and making sure that we're providing the safest environment for our students, including revac, uh, evacuation routes and reunification spots and things like that. Um, Chief Mallett, Officer Williams, and Officer Moore, and we're at the school this past Monday? On Monday, the week has kind of melted together, but on Monday, they were there doing Alice training with our seventh graders. Um, the Alice protocols from elementary to middle to high school are much different than they are in the elementary building. Um, so certainly Chief Mallett, Officer Moore, and Officer Williams did a spectacular job of presenting that information um, to our students. Um, and we are forever grateful for, um, you know, the service that our police fire, um, and Highway and Cert teams provide to the school and the members of our community, including our students and staff.
Do you have anything else for us, sir?
That's all I have.
Do you have any questions?
I mentioned it before, but the lights of the general, awesome.
Yeah. It is an improvement and part of the, uh, part of the, um, part of the lighting upgrades is the stadium field as well. Um, right now, the stadium field.
Crossed my fingers.
Yeah, no, we're going to get that one there. Um, right now, they currently run at sixty percent. And I think that Chief LaVoye back there would probably agree that there are some safety issues with some darker spots on the field. It's good to have night games. I think it brings the community out together when they can't do it during the day. Um, but there are, there are some disadvantages when the lighting system isn't working as well as it possibly could. So if we can get that done free of charge as well, then we're going to hop on that.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay.
We really appreciate you coming in, giving us updates on what's going on with the schools. It helps us understand better because we can't really get to the school meeting sometimes because we're dealing with everything else going. As you can see tonight, you know, there's a lot going on. And, you know, we appreciate that feedback and the back and forth discussions. And I have to say, by far, you are one of the best superintendents that we've had at that school in a long time. You're doing a great job. I appreciate it.
And I'd like to thank Ray for coming to all our meetings. Uh, he's there all the time, which is great. Um, and he asks some really insightful questions, which, you know, is important. It's important that everybody understands how the budget is made. Uh, and then if there is some misunderstanding, we can clarify or we can look at things in a different light. Um, so thank you, Ray. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Just a, a quick comment, just to publicly acknowledge, uh, Ray Facko, uh, Finance Committee. Their, their new hire, um, for a, uh, Finance Director, uh, Beryl, is it Watson?
Beryl Wagner.
Wagner, my Belgies. That's been a great change, uh, very helpful change. And, and, uh, she's doing a fantastic job from my perspective.
Very good. Okay, very good. Thank you. You guys open? Mr. Ferrari, yeah?
No. I, it was, it was, uh, great, uh, going over to Warren Community Elementary School last week. Uh, we had the state out there. Uh, Chris Mason came out to do the final inspection on the Green Communities Grant. It's great. Everything looked past flying colors. It was good to see the building. Good to catch up with Mark, um, and yourself, Steve. Um, but I'm, I'm happy that the project is done and now we can move on to other grants with Green Communities in the future.
And what I'd like to add, and Jim was there, um, the State Inspector was surprised at the amount of initiatives that this district takes on, um, particularly, uh, for some of the incentives that we have. He said, um, that he doesn't see districts that have been as successful as we have been in terms of, um, efficiency and with energy savings. Um, so that is a feather and a cap to everybody within the community that are working together uh, to make sure we're doing everything we can to be more green, more efficient, but more, um, financially responsible to offset the costs of our budgets.
Very good. Thank you very much. Does anybody in the public have any questions for the superintendent? No? Cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much. I hope you have a great night.
Discussion on execution of engineering contract with Weston and Sampson for FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three, Phase Two School Street, anticipated vote. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Ferrer?
Uh, just, uh, I just want to let the board know that this is the, for Phase Two of the, uh, School Street Improvement Project. Um, as you, uh, may recall, back in December, uh, the board wanted to continue with Weston and Sampson. This is now the official contract to continue, uh, with Weston and Sampson, uh, for those services, uh, which will be starting, um, as soon as the, uh, contract is signed this evening. Um, uh, they will, uh, start with the engineering services, um, as well as construction administration. Um, and, um, you know, we'll, we'll get out, uh, the bidding, uh, for, um, sometime in March to start Phase Two of the School Street, um, uh, project, Improvement Project.
And the bid, bids all in order?
Uh, the bids haven't gone out yet, so they.
No, but. Pay for work was all in order?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions?
No.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir. Everything looks good.
All right. I'll make a motion to sign the engineering contract with Wentz- Weston and Sampson for the FY twenty-two, twenty-three, Phase Two School Street Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Number five, discussion on execution of engineering contract with Weston and Sampson, FY twenty-four, One Step Rural Development Fund for Otis Street Improvement, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is for Otis Street. So continuing on with our, our approach of, of taking care of school, Prospect, Richardson, um, that, that area. We're going to continue on with Otis Street, um, uh, starting in the, in the, uh, spring. Um, and this is for a grant that we received, a state grant, uh, from the One Stop for Growth and the amount of, uh, four-hundred-thousand dollars, um, you know, towards the cost of this project. Um, Weston and Sampson will be doing our engineering, uh, and, um, construction admin for the project. Uh, contract is in front of you for consideration this evening.
Okay. And everything is in order?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions, sir?
I do not.
Do you have any?
No, sir.
Okay, do a motion.
Make a motion to sign the engineering contract with Weston and Sampson for FY twenty-four, One Stop slash Rural Development Fund Grant for Otis Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, six, discussion on appointing Jeremy Olson, Rich A. Hocker, uh, Carol Sussville, Steve Kristal, James McKeon, James Ferrara as ex-officio for a three-year term to the Community Development Advisory Committee, anticipated vote. Okay? So make a motion?
You have to abstain.
I make a motion to appoint Jeremy Olson, Steve Kristin, Carol S- Sussville, Steve Kristin, James McKeon for three years, for three-year term to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. And Mr. A. Hocker abstains. Uh, motion passes unanimously.
You didn't.
Mr. A. Hocker didn't get in there. Steve, Steve Kristal got in there twice.
And Jim Ferrara didn't get in there either.
Oh. So do I read the black instead?
Yep.
And it's not Kristin, it's Crystal.
Crystal.
So is there an N? Is there a L?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just read the top one in black.
Okay. Make a motion to appoint Jeremy Olson, Rick Eiker, Rich Eiker, Carol Sussville, Steve Kristal, James McKeon, James Ferrera as ex-officio for a three-year term to the Community Development Advisory Committee, anticipated vote.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, seven, discussion on special committee appointment for the Town Common Design Project. Jeremy Olson, Sue Ramsey, Derek Bellis, David Shepherd, and Sylvia Buck, anticipated vote. So, do you guys have any questions about this one?
Nope. Sounds good to me.
Think it's a great choice. All right.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jeremy Olson, Sue Ramsey, Derek Bellis, David Shepherd, and Sylvia Buck to the Town Common Design Project.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Uh, with Mr. Bellis abstaining. Okay, discussion on contract amendment, number one, between the town of West, the town and Weston and Sampson Engineers, anticipated vote.
This is a simple contract extension that, uh, they are seeking to extend, uh, completion of design services until June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four. I see no reason not to, uh, to allow the, uh, extension.
This is a School Street Improvement Project, and what's the reason they're requesting the extension?
Uh, they needed some additional time to perform, uh, the design services, uh, from Weston and Sampson. Um, it's well within the, the scope of the, of the, uh, of the, of the time period for the grant. I, I don't see there's a, a reason not to give them, uh, some additional time.
Okay. Do you have any questions, sir?
I do not.
No, sir.
Okay, vote.
All right. I'll make a motion to sign amendment number one on the School Street Improvement Project with Weston and Sampson.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, nine, discussion on contract amendment number two between the town and Central Mass Regional Planning Com- Commission, anticipated vote. Mr. Ferrara?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is, uh, as you may recall, the board, uh, uh, granted CMRPC, um, a, a contract extension for their services with, uh, their, um, administrative services for the CDBG fund that they manage, um, you know, uh, last, at last round of CDBG. They're, they're looking for a, a similar extension, uh, for this round of CDBG up until June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay. Uh, do you have any questions, sir?
No.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, do a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to assign amendment number two on the FY twenty-one Massachusetts Community Development Fund Program Administrative Servi- Services with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
You assign. You said assign.
Make a motion to sign?
Yes.
Yeah.
You said assign.
Oh, my God. Okay. Make, make a motion to sign amendment two.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, acknowledge of a resignation for Police Officer Paul Sojjan effective one-twenty-eight, uh, two thousand twenty-four. Again, very sad that we're losing him. He's been a great member of our town and helping out. He's been to all the events. Believe he knows, um, the Grinch personally. So it's very sad to lose him in our community, and I wish there's something we can do to keep him, but he is going on to. Rutland. Stealing our guys.
He'll be back.
I hope.
Story of my life. I train him, they go to a bigger department.
But with bigger departments, they have bigger problems, too. They're much more active, so.
I don't know about that. We're a lot busier than them.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you guys definitely keep it moving.
Did you train him well?
Oh, yeah.
That's a good thing.
Be great to keep him, but.
Like, Rich said, he'll be back.
Do we know why he's actually leaving?
Uh, when I ask him those questions, the building is a big one. Everyone will use the building as an issue where we are, and then, uh, growth, more growth.
So it's the building and he wants more opportunity?
More supervisor, more positions for supervisor, who won't help.
Can't, can't beat him in growth, you know? All right.
And we're working on the building issue, so.
Yeah. Yeah, be nice to get that.
In the future, they'll come here for the building.
Yeah, we're hoping.
Let's hope.
We're hoping. All right. So eleven, possible vote to execute a contract between the town and EJ Prescott, Inc. for fiscal year twenty-four materials for state aid, road construction, and general town road maintenance, anticipated vote.
Mr. Chairman, um, what you'll see this evening is several contracts for, uh, FY twenty-four, uh, road materials for state aid road construction and general road town maintenance. This is for, uh, chapter ninety funds that Highway Surveyor, uh, Jeremy Olson, uh, is in charge of. In getting use of these funds, he has to go out to, uh, bid, uh, for, uh, services, um, and materials, uh, related to this project, uh, use of chapter ninety funds. This, uh, bid went out in the fall of, uh, of twenty-four. Uh, we've gotten back. They were awarded, uh, to the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, now contracts are trickling back in, uh, being signed by, um, these companies. Before you this evening, there's about, um, five, five of them uh, that need to be signed, uh, for various, uh, chapter ninety work. Um, you know, some of these companies have been doing business with the town, uh, for some time. Um, their insurances, their bonds have all been checked and on file.
Do we have any complaints about any of these companies or any?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you guys have any questions about any of these companies that we're about to go through? Because we're just going to go right through them all because it's procedural.
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, so make a motion on the first one?
Make a motion to sign the contract, uh, with EJ Prescott, Inc. for FY twenty-four materials for state aid road construction and general town road maintenance.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Um, possible vote to execute a contract between the town and Indus for fiscal year twenty-four materials for state aid, road construction, and general town road maintenance, anticipated vote.
All right, just go ahead and, okay. I'll make a motion to sign a contract with Indus for FY twenty-four materials for state aid road construction and general town road maintenance.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Possible vote to execute a contract between the town and Palmer Paving Corporation for fiscal year twenty-four materials for state aid road construction and general road maintenance, anticipated vote.
I'll make a motion to sign a contract with Palmer Paving Corporation for FY twenty-four materials for state aid road construction and general town road maintenance.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Fourteen, possible vote to execute a contract between the town and All States Construction, Inc. for fiscal year twenty-four materials for state aid road construction and general town road maintenance, anticipated vote.
I'll make a motion to sign a contract with All States Construction, Inc. for FY twenty-four materials for state aid road construction and general town road maintenance.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Fifteen, discussion impossible vote to execute a contract between the town and USI Consulting Group for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, uh, actuarial variation services, anticipated vote. Is this diff- this is different?
This is different. This is a different one, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, members of the board. This is from the town accountant. Uh, this is for actuarial services and evaluation services, uh, that the town is engaged in with US, USI Consulting Group. Um, has been with them for quite some time. Uh, this, uh, this company provides, uh, post-employment, OPEP, uh, health and wellness, uh, benefits, actuarial services for our active employees and for our retirees. Um, they do an evaluation report. Uh, it's part of the financial information required under, uh, the General Accounting Principles seventy-five. Um, it's a requirement, um, and this company provides the services, uh, for the town, uh, for the actuarial services. Um, in the, in the exposure, they, they calculate all of that.
Okay, so we're just continuing the contract?
Correct.
Have we any complaints or any concerns about them and their services?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Do you guys have any questions?
I do not.
No, sir.
Okay.
So I'll make a, make a motion to sign a contract with USI Consulting Group for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five actuarial valuation services.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, discussion impossible vote on a resolution to support Senate Bill, uh, Sierra S. uh, one-three-one-nine and House Bill H, as in Hotel, two-zero-eight-two, acts regarding municipal zoning powers related to solar project, anticipated vote. Okay. And if you want to.
Yeah, so there is, um, in Mass General Law, there's an, a, amendment called the Dover Amendment. And in there, it says that solar shall not be unreasonably regulated. When that was put in back in the nineties, it was targeted towards rooftop solar. So that if you wanted to put solar panels on your roof, a town couldn't say no, basically. You, you had the freedom to do that. But what it's turned into is kind of, um, a big wedge between large commercial solar and the towns. Where large commercial solar utilizes this to basically put in large solar sites without the towns being able to properly regulate. So what you have are, um, traffic issues during construction. You have, um, a lot of problems, mostly problems with runoff and water issues. Um, and Jim and I heard some horror stories at the MMA, um, about some of that. Where a lot of these are built on slopes because then you can put your panels up. But when you strip all the trees out and you put the solar panels on, all that water that was well contained within the roots of the trees just pours off those sites. And we've experienced it in this town and other towns have experienced it, so. What this would allow is to get rid of that sentence in the Dover Amendment and give us a power back. It's really the best way to, to deal with all this. There's been many approaches and ideas, and this is the simplest and the most straightforward. Just get rid of that sentence and we'll be able to regulate reasonably.
Do you have any questions, sir?
Why we didn't do this seven years ago?
Yeah.
We saved us a lot of meeting time.
Well, unfortunately, it's taken a lot of failed projects to finally, you know, kick us collectively in the butt.
A lot of destroyed land and habitats over the years because of it.
We're cutting down all these trees to put in solar. It just doesn't make sense.
No.
Putting solar on the dump is a great idea.
Brown zone.
Yeah.
Put on a brown zone or a rooftop.
But to take out hundreds of acres, I think maybe seven hundred acres in Warren, I have statistics I could read, but we have a lot of solar sites. We've lost a lot of trees
Yeah.
in this town, so, yeah, it doesn't make sense. So this is to support, this is in committee now, and they need to move it out of committee to the general legislature, uh, to get voted out. So this is to support it moving out of committee, like, to go to the next step.
Good, where do we sign?
So what we need to do is send a letter and, and I, I'll, I'll work with, uh, Joyce on conservation. But basically, we just want to send it to our reps. Where's the list here?
There's a whole list of.
So a couple reps and a couple chairs of the various committees. Also, we'll send the email to. And, uh, we need to get planning board to meet quickly and do the same thing. We need to have this done before the seventh of February, so.
Mr. Ferrara, do you have any questions?
Oh, I, I think it's a great piece of legislation. I think Rich, uh, you know, hit the nail on the head with all of the stuff that's out there with, you know, solar projects. And now everybody's trying to play Monday, Monday morning quarterback and, you know, it, it, the legislation just wasn't, you know, thought out at the time and everybody was rushing to green energy and, and now it's, it's, it's trying to, you know, play catch up and, and try to correct, uh, you know, correct the wrongs and hopefully the legislature will, you know, will, will see this and, you know, and how much of a burden it's really put on, you know, small towns, rural towns that have decimated, you know, s- acres of land where you can't now build houses. Who knows, you know, twenty years from now, you know, if they're gonna be still in operation? You know, the cleanup efforts, you know, trying to get, you know, if there's any contamination out there, it's just a whole host of, of things.
Right, there's really no plan to decommission these sites that last about twenty years, right? To dispose of all these panels. We have hundreds of thousands.
That's maximum, maximum. Once you stop plugging them, isn't it like seven years they stop really degrading?
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
And then, you know, you lose value of the site because it only produces so much and then it starts producing less and less and less.
Yeah.
So. But, um, yeah. Anybody have any questions for the public about this?
All right, so we're.
I'm good with it.
Are we making a motion?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, for a resolution from this board to support Senate Bill S. One three, one nine and House Bill H twenty eighty two.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is discussion impossible vote on continued employment agreement between the town administrator, James Ferrara, anticipated vote. Okay. So we met in executive session and negotiated a contract with Mr. Ferrara. Uh, we think it's fair. It would help us keep Mr. Ferrara on staff for a few more weeks. For a few more years, at least. I think Mr. Ferrara has been a great asset to our community and he has helped this town immensely and provided a level of professionalism in the town hall that we were lacking for a long time. That was consistent. Unfortunately, with selectmen and appointed boards, everybody has jobs and other things to do. So it's very difficult to constantly maintain what is going on within the town and making sure all the parts are moving correctly and as efficiently as possible. Uh, Mr. Ferrara picks up that and makes sure that everything is, um, being done correctly and that the town is running as best as it possibly can. And he's been doing an outstanding job with that and we really appreciate everything he's been doing. Plus, he's been a great asset with obtaining grants over three million dollars worth of.
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in grants.
We're getting three million dollars, we're getting there.
Soon. So it's a lot of money in grants that we wouldn't have had before and that's just grants you've gone for.
That's the only ones that I've gone for, yes.
Not including all the other ones and making sure that the other ones are being followed through and being done. So he's been doing a great job with that and we hope to continue and keep him in the town as long as we can. So, yeah, do you have any questions, sir?
I do not.
Yeah?
No, nope, I'm thankful every day Jim's here.
Anything?
I have no words. Good job.
All right. Anybody in the public have any questions or concerns or any reason why we shouldn't continue a contract with Mr. Ferrara? Right now?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, um.
Anybody on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom?
Nope, no comments. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the employment contract with James J. Ferrara.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're ours for another couple of years. Thank you, Mr. Ferrara. Okay, um, fire department monthly report. Chief, how you doing tonight?
Good evening again. Uh, thank you for having me in this evening. So we responded to forty-five fire calls in December of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, ranged, um, in categories for motor vehicle accidents, six, uh, medical assists, seventeen, uh, activated alarms, three, carbon monoxide, one call, investigations, one call, power line incidents, two calls, illegal burns, two calls. Uh, canceled en route six, uh, six times for calls that weren't necessary to respond to. Uh, service calls, three, mutual aid calls, one, structure fires, three. Warren EMS, uh, responded to fifty-nine calls in December of two thousand and twenty-three and fifteen ALS intercepts were required for those calls. Uh, we did, uh, several inspections, which included three smoke and carbon monoxide inspections, uh, three oil burner inspections, two oil tank inspections and four liquid propane inspections. In terms of activities and meetings, uh, Warren EMS trained on respiratory emergencies and CPAP administration, uh, in protocols as well as check and inject medication protocols. Uh, Warren Fire Personnel continued mounting equipment on the new engine four, uh, which was the truck that was, uh, more than half paid for by the AFG grant uh, and continued driver training, uh, and familiarization on that vehicle. We're still in that process. We expect that to continue for a little bit longer until, uh, everything is mounted exactly where we are, we want it. And, uh, all the drivers have been, uh, through the pump training and through the driver training to make sure that, um, everybody knows exactly how to operate that vehicle. In terms of the budget, uh, when I wrote this, I, I said, uh, we're continuing to watch over the FY twenty-four budget closely. Uh, since then, I do have one line item. I will include it in my next report, but it's our billing and reporting line item. This is the, uh, we use a outside billing company for years, uh, uh, by the name of Comstar. Uh, we've been contracting with them for many years now. It's, it's, they're, they're a very well-known company. Many, many towns and municipalities use them. Uh, unfortunately, you know, our prices, uh, excuse me, our bills each month have gone up and that is because our vol- our car call volume has gone up. It's based on the percentage of, of calls that they bill. That's, uh, it's a certain percentage, uh, that, that we pay each month based on how many calls they bill out. So, uh, I budgeted it some extra money this month, but the bills that have been coming in over the last couple of months have been a little higher than we normally will see and that's because we've been doing more calls. Um, so that's an ever-changing line item and it's not really in my control because it's completely dependent on how many calls we actually do. Um, so I am watching that one closely. I do think, I talked to, to, uh, Mr. Ferrera and I did tell him I, I think a transfer will probably be necessary down the road, but I believe that line item will make it till May. Uh, I just wanted to put it on the board's radar that I am watching that particular line item. One other thing that I wanted to bring to the board's attention that just happened recently and I did talk to, to Jim about this. Uh, unfortunately, our, uh, water heater at Station A is failing. Um, it is starting to leak. Um, I, it has been doing so for several months now slowly. Um, it is getting a little bit worse as time goes on. We currently have a bin underneath it where we have to empty every couple of days. I did have a plumber come in and look at that. Um, I did got a price today. I hadn't had a chance to talk to you about that yet. Uh, we're looking at just under four thousand dollars for replacement of that unit. Um, it is a stock unit. It would be something that we could get a hold of pretty quickly and have that replaced. Um, unfortunately, it's out of warranty. It was installed in two thousand and seventeen when we did the Green Communities, um, upgrade for the heaters and stuff. It is just out of warranty. There was a five-year warranty on it. Um, I did confirm that with both the installer as well as the plumber that came in. They looked up the VIN number on it and everything and they were able to look at any warranties that were there and unfortunately it's out of date. Uh, it's the same one at Station B. Station B's is not having a problem at this time, but Station A's is definitely failing internally and there's nothing, there's no repair that can be made to it at this point. So I bring this up only because four thousand dollars is a huge hit to take in a regular budget at this time of year. So, uh, we have a couple of options. We either do nothing right now and we look and see if we can transfer money in May and we continue to empty that bin as it water collects and we do our best to stay up on that. We have had some floor damage already from that, from spilling over. We've had a little, a little bit of mold come in that we've had to remediate a little bit, nothing crazy, but just because there is moisture coming out of that. So, um, you know, I'm certainly willing to monitor it and obviously we have hot water right now. We have sufficient water right now. Um, it's more of a maintenance issue. Um, so we can certainly sit on it and see if it gets any worse and continue to, to do what we do or I can fix it out of my current budget and take four thousand dollars out of there roughly right now and knowing I'm gonna have a shortfall coming in, in May. So I just wanted to put it on, you know, let the board know and, and Jim know with the updated quote, that's what we're kind of looking at right now. So I'm open for any suggestions, but I mean, it's not an emergency at the moment because we have hot water, but who knows? It could let go overnight one night and then we have a much bigger problem, um, you know, when nobody's at the station. So, uh, it hasn't, it's been doing this for several months now, so like I said, it could very easily limp along, um, you know, and, and not affect that. But there's no doubt in my mind it would have a drastic effect, uh, effect on my budget right now, taking that money out of that. So I would definitely need a transfer, transport or, or something else coming down the road. I, we could put it on a, um, you know, a, a, a warrant for the town meeting. However, the town meeting is pushed back until June this year. So, you know, that's that extra thing. So I would suggest at least a transfer would be necessary to do that, but I just wanted to put that on the board's radar.
So just don't wait, wait until we get a public safety complex?
No, no, I don't think it's gonna last quite that long. No, no, and, uh, you know, flex seal only works so far. So, uh, you know, so, uh, you know, that's kind of where we're at with it. I mean, it's not a major leak. It's something that we, again, we empty every couple, couple of days, but that's not saying that the interior of the tank lets go altogether.
Is there anywhere we can transfer any money out of a line item transfer?
Well, we can't do a transfer until May first. You know, there's, there's an op- there's a, there's a potential option of doing a, you know, a reserve account transfer. If the finance committee would go along with that, be due to its, you know, unforeseen nature and, and its continuing failure.
I just worry that it's, it's leaking now, but it's gonna fail.
Well, my, my.
And I'd rather get it fixed before it fails.
I mean, we don't staff overnight. I mean, we're, we have people there from seven in the morning usually till eleven at evening. So if it fails over. If it fails overnight, it's directly on the other side of my office, which is carpeted and everything else, so.
So it's gonna flood your office.
You know, it, 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 there could be a, a serious potential problem if it were to let go altogether. So, I mean, I, I certainly could look at, if they would do a reserve account transfer, that would be great. I know it takes some time to get the finance committee, uh, involved in that and have a vote on that, but it, it certainly is a, a situation that we didn't expect to happen. Unfortunately, I, I've exhausted all avenues looking for warranties and everything at this point.
I, I would suggest you get it fixed because I would rather fix it than have it damage more and cost us more money down the line. Because if it lets go and floods the office, then we gotta replace the rug and then if it destroys any computer equipment that just happens to be in the office or anything else, you know? I would rather just get it fixed and not have to worry about it. It's something you guys shouldn't have to be worried about dealing with. I'm good with it getting fixed.
Yeah, I mean, if it just started leaking like yesterday, I would say, well, maybe, but if it's already been leaking for a while.
We, we thought originally the first leak, we, that's why I called the plumber in and we were dealing with it. It was not, it was minimal water. Uh, we thought it was actually a fitting on there that could be replaced, but after they looked into it, um, it, it was clear that on the backside of it, it was leaking. It was gathering in the rim around the bottom of it and everything. So there's multiple points of failure in there, which means, which means internally it's got issues.
Yeah, don't mess with it anymore.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Don't put Dunkin' Donuts napkins.
Yeah.
Don't fuck around with Dunkin' Donuts napkins.
No, if it's not supposed to leak, I'm go for it. Get it, let's get it, man.
I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever the, the finance and the board is, is willing to do. If they would, you know, prefer to do a reserve account transfer so it doesn't come directly out of our budget at this time, that'd be great. But if they would rather be taking it out of the budget, knowing there's gonna be a problem that we'll have to address down the road, that's also doable.
So work with Mr. Ferrara in that. You get our blessing, get it fixed because you can't be just letting it. It's gonna just get worse.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk with Jim tomorrow.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Do you have any questions, Mr.?
I do not.
No, sir.
Great job, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Uh, emergency management monthly report. Jimmy, you're up.
Good evening, Emergency Management Director, uh, James McInn with my December, uh, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three, half two thousand three.
Yeah. Let's fix that. Last year. Um, we start, uh, December started with our tree lighting. Uh, I had two members from our team assist and then I had a couple of different teams come out for regional. Westbrook Field had a couple of members and Charlotte had a couple of members. I set up different divisions. One, one team was in charge of the shuttle parking. One team was helping out with crosswalks and some detours in the underpass. Basically, to make it work, we needed the other members. As I'm limited on, on members. Which everything worked out well. Police Department was very happy with what we gave them. And we had one member handing out some holiday safety, uh, information.
Good job.
Passed that out. Later that weekend, we did the, uh, siren test. Uh, everything was okay with that. And then on December fourth, um, West Warren Water District had a water break under the South Street Bridge, uh, which made the, the, um, center of West Warren out with water. They had to shut it off. Repairs were made, um, and by two PM that day, the water was back on, no other issues were. Uh, December sixth, I attended the State Quarterly Emergency Management Meeting in Agawam. December sixth, we did our, uh, monthly CERT training. Uh, finished up our CPR, uh, section and, um, started talking about, uh, fire safety and search and rescue. talking about fire safety and search and rescue. Then, December tenth, one of the first heavy rainstorms that dropped about three inches of rain caused flooding in our normal flood areas, Reed Street, also a newer area, well, not more Ave, Main Street. Mass DOT handled that situation with signing cones. Then, the following week, we got another three inches of rain, which made more of flooding issue. This time, there was some more wind with that storm, which caused some power outages in Quaybog Street, more Ave area. Probably about seventy-five, yeah, people out for a couple of hours.
Houses or people? Houses or people?
Uh, the house, residents, houses.
Houses? Seventy-five houses?
Yes. The, the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And then that caused the, the school to be early released because of the power issue. Roadways that got flooded were the same, Lower Reed, Sardi, and Waukees. And also, I believe there was one basement flooding on Richardson Street that the fire department assisted in. And also, that, later that day, they provided twelve sandbags to the school to help out some water that was going in the back gym area. Currently, they have these bags, if it be, if it happens again, they can deploy them much quicker.
It's nice to have those sandbags available, huh?
Yep, that's the first time we actually deployed sandbags. And on, this, last, our December twenty-first, I had a certain member help with the Jingle Fund pickup, the police department did. And we used our light tower to help light up the back of the building.
Very good. Good job. Did you have anything else, sir?
Only thing I have is like, we have, like I said, when I first started, a lower amount of people, but we, we're, like, try to reach out to other regional teams to make things work. They do come help us, we help them, so that's the way it's been going.
Very good.
Good relationship with our neighbors.
So, if somebody wants to join, contact you.
If someone wants to join, looking for any kind of volunteers, even if we need just to open a shelter, it don't have to be part in traffic or anything, we'll find some, some task for you.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have any questions, sir?
I do not.
Do you have any questions?
I'm just thinking something, I'm cooking something here.
Oh.
Do you have on, on the website, do you have listed all the things that SERC does, you know, to attract, you know, new members?
Well, recently, we started talking regional lies to all the different teams to try, because every, all these teams are having the same issues as we are, trying to get a, a layout to better entice people, and what, what the program can do, kinda restart it.
Like a recruitment thing?
Yes.
Think about it, I'll, I'll help you guys do some, something to put together, so you can promote.
And I believe Mima's, Mima and other teams are, were, were trying to work on something too, so it'll kinda be, uh, everything, everyone on the same page.
Okay, think about it.
But, yes.
Come up with that list, and then we, we do some cool stuff.
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. Well, thank you very much, sir. Great job as usual. Definitely, tree lighting and everything went really well.
Yep.
And thank you for taking care of the clock tower lights. You did a good job.
Yes, we, we, we do that.
It's one of my many. And then winding it up?
Yep.
Good job.
Every, every, about every six days, it needs to be one.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Warrants and bills. Payroll and vendor warrants.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number thirty-seven vendor, hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and forty-five cents. Number thirty-eight payroll, fifty-five thousand nine hundred three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Number thirty-nine vendor, ninety-six thousand fifty-one dollars and forty-nine cents. Number forty payroll, fifty-fif, fifty-five thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-two cents. Number forty-one vendor, four hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second? All favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Velis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the following bills. WB Mason, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and eight cents. Northeast IT, hundred and fifty dollars ninety-nine cents. KP Law, thirty-three hundred sixty-five dollars and seven cents. Encore Fire Protection, hundred and twenty-five dollars. National Grid, twenty-four hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Verizon, seven dollars seventy-seven. Warren Water District, hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. Stericycle, one hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. American Tower, twenty-two hundred. SBA Structures, seventeen hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Camden Communications Corp., fifteen hundred dollars. Smith Vocational, sixty-six hundred ninety-two dollars. Vanpool, thirty-six hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. AK Industrial Services, twenty-nine thousand one hundred sixty-five. Comcast, twenty dollars and thirty cents.
Second? All favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Velis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Town administrator report. Sir, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just wanna start out by giving you a, a brief recap of myself and Selectman Ihocker went last week to the MMA, MIA convention, the Mass Municipal Association Annual Convention and Trade Show. There, you know, we, we participated in several different discussions and seminars. The seminars that I went to were, were cybersecurity. The other one was municipal law update focusing in on unemployment law, in impacts on, on new laws that are, are surrounding towns and municipalities across the state. I know that when we went to the trade show floor, there were several different vendors that we had recognized that obviously town does business with, but also some, some new potential vendors that are on the state contract that could potentially provide services in the future to the town. I know that we were looking at, and, and before we went on to the convention, myself and Selectman Veliz sat down with the company for managed services, Entrez Technologies, you know, to have them do an assessment and provide us with a, with a potential quote for managed services, a budgetary quote. It appears that they've come in lower on their quote, I'm still waiting for a little bit more finalization on that quote, but on face value, it appears that there, there's a potential for savings there with Entrez. There's some other companies there that, that were at the show, that also provides IT services that I would like to get a quote from as well, so that we have some, you know, at least three good quotes that we can look at, so that I could bring them in front of the board and, and see how the board would like to proceed. But, I am preliminarily saying that there's, there's, there could be some potential savings there for, for the budget, if the ti, if the town wanted to move in a different direction and to try a different company. But, with the overall trade show, I thought it was well-attended. It was great to see some of our neighboring communities there. Westbrook Field was there. I saw some representatives from Munson and Wilbraham, Brimfield. So, I mean, it was a good, it was a good show to participate in and to learn some updates on what is happening across the state. We heard from the governor, the lieutenant governor, Senator Markey's office, Senator Markey himself, and Senator Warren. At the conclusion of, of the, the trade show, probably the most important part was they, they provided us with budgetary numbers for our health insurance with, with MIA, right? So, they're estimating health insurance premiums for, for next year to have a, a minimum increase of two-point-two percent, all the way up to a maximum of nine-point-nine-five percent, with the average being at like six-point-six percent, being within that range for health insurance costs for people who have MIA insurance, which the town does. So, I provided this budgetary numbers to Dawn so that, that she can base her, her estimates. Dental is looking at a zero percent increase for some communities, all the way up to a maximum of four-point-eight percent, with the average trust, the MIA trust, they're, they're calculating at, at a two-point-one percent increase on average. In the vision plan, we'll see no, no changes in rates. So, as you can see, you know, health insurance, dental, vision, you know, there's, there's some fluctuation on the health side and the dental side. We're hoping that we're getting more close towards the two-point-two percent for, for the town of Warren, but, you know, there is some jumps there. And, you know, along with health insurance, there's also jumps in property and casualty and, and, and workers comp, and injured on duty increases that the town has to budget for. These are important insurance protections for the town. You know, I just had in here this week, when we got right back from MIA, I sat down with the police chief, with the fire chief, and we brought Joanne from MIA in, as well as Jim from Cap at Risk, to go over injured on duty, you know, how to, you know, how to handle an incident, a claim, and provide us with new updated books for the police and fire chiefs. I think it's critically important, you know, we hope to never have to use these types of, of, of reports injured on duty, but it, it's a necessary evil and we have to be prepared. So, we brought them right in, we, and we had the chiefs there, it was great, they were able to ask questions, interact with them, one-on-one, right here in, 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 in town hall. So, I mean, it was, it, it's, it's important that, you know, that we continue to monitor where insurances are. We went over a few deductibles, there's some potential savings there by, on the property casualty side, on the property casualty side for, you know, for some of our buildings, you know, some of the buildings that were identified in, 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 in their, their report, you know, we need to beef up some of our, of our property casualty stuff. You know, for example, our, our wastewater treatment plant, we gotta beef it up a little bit. And in order to beef it up and not get killed on the premium, we changed a little bit of the, you know, we're, we're proposing to change some of the, a little bit of the deductible, you know, instead of having a thousand-dollar deductible for an entire building, you know, if, if there was a catastrophic event, I think the town could come up with five thousand dollars, you know, for, for an entire building, a deductible. And that potential savings right there could be eight thousand dollars on a premium. I mean, it's huge as to how you can manipulate some of these deductibles and save on premium. We're working on something right now with a proposal with Joanne, where we have the potential of saving fifteen thousand dollars plus in premium, so it will combat some of that increase of, of, of premium that the town is gonna have to deal with, and also try to beef up the insurance coverages and the valuations of the buildings. Because all of the buildings are, are, are at a, you know, replacement cost, so you have to go at replacement cost of nowadays modern replacement cost. So, we've looked at all, all the buildings, there's been an assessment done, we'll, we'll have some, some finalized numbers for you to look at, and just to see where we are. But, Joanne in MIA and the team there are, are really top-notch. They, they've come into town, they're able to work with us, show us where there's potential savings, and help us to try to identify where we may need some additional coverages and protections. So, I thought that was a very important meeting that we had this week with them. Thank you both chiefs for attending and participating. Another thing that happened this week is we, we had the sewer commissioners meeting, I attended the sewer commissioners meeting, I'm working with the sewer commission and our chief operator with trying to get a position filled for operator mechanic. We've had some interviews, we just can't seem to come across, you know, and, you know, individuals that, you know, potentially could have a license, although we would be more than happy to try to work, you know, to get that person a license within six months to twelve months. But, you know, at our current rate of pay, it's, it's very difficult to attract people for that particular position, you know, that have, that hold current licenses, you know, and it's, and it's, it's a tough market out there, it's very competitive, and we still have it posted, and we're still accepting applications, so we're hoping that, you know, that we, we, we continue to get some resumes in, and, you know, we thought we had somebody, and then we scheduled a pre-employment physical in Drug Spring, and the person doesn't show up. So, you know, maybe that's a blessing in disguise.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, it, it's just, you know, it's, it's a very tough market out there. So, we're working on that, I'm working with them. There's some mandates that have come down by the Mass DEP that Ralph has been working on with tie and bond, that he has to continue to update and make sure that we meet certain milestones on our, our consent order that we have with the Mass DEP. I know that there's an important signing coming up for that, and the sewer commissioners, I, I believe, are meeting on Wednesday, I, I, you know, it's my, my hope, that they're meeting this Wednesday, to sign that consent order and to continue to work with tie and bond, and it's my understanding also that, that tie and bond has done substantially a lot of the work that is, you know, part of this consent order that they're gonna be, you know, being able to produce, you know, by the certain deadlines that are out there. So, working with them, monitoring the situation, making sure that, that we are, you know, moving forward with that project. Also, working with the police chief, we have advertised a full-time police officer. We've been accepting applications all the way up until tomorrow, right, chief? Tomorrow, so if anybody's out there interviewing audience, you know, full-time police officer, part-time police officer, we're looking, we're hiring, it's a great community to work in, and we've gotten quite a few different applicants. I know the chief is very eager to get them in for an interview. We're gonna be starting interviews simultaneously to Budget Week next week, so we're gonna be fitting in some interviews in between meeting with the budget. Next week, we're starting our Budget Week, where I meet individually with every department head, every department, on their budgets, and we, we talk about them, we get them prepped, ready for the finance committee, so when they go into the finance committee, you know, a lot of things have been, you know, very smooth transition into finance committee, so that they have all of their stuff in an order for them. So, we'll be working on that. Tomorrow, we have, we're starting our interviews for the town accountant's position. I know Selectman Ihocker has been involved in, in reading some of the interview, some of the resumes and cover letters. We're moving forward with that. I have asked the interim town accountant and the treasurer to also weigh in, and there's gonna be a couple of different options that I think that the board will consider in the future, and, you know, it may be something out of the box. There's other communities, you know, town accountants are very tough to come by, and there's other communities have spent a lot of money on town accountants, and they're just so few far and few between that have the credentialing and have the experience that really know how to handle municipal accounting, that some communities have, you know, done some, some different types of models that, that, you know, potentially the board could be looking at and will be, will be bringing to the board at, at a period of time. I do also wanna let the board know that I, I have been in contact with Gil Engineering. Gil Engineering contacted me last night. Gil Engineering is working with the state, Mass DOT. The town was a recipient of a small grant, a bridge grant award, as you may remember, from last year. Now, it's coming to fruition. So, they're gonna handle the small bridge on Pulaski Street and in South Street right there, right, really to dovetail right in nicely into our EDA stuff that we're doing down there. They've started their engineering phase, they've, I've contacted our chair of our Conservation Commission, Joyce Ihocker, to inform her that I signed for them to go in front of this, the Conservation Commission, so that they can present their case in front of them on behalf of the town, and that this is a towns project, and there's some preliminary... Um, and um, there's some preliminary uh drawings and sketches that they're gonna be reviewing. Um, and they'll be having a public hearing uh expeditiously is what I was told. So, um, you know, in the next, they're gonna try to squeeze them in there in the next meeting. So, everything's been moving uh very quickly. Uh, this month has been a very busy month. Next uh week, we have our master plan kickoff uh at six o'clock, a very important meeting. Uh, but during the day, the people from C M R P C will be around. They're gonna, they wanna spend the whole day here, they wanna be around, they want, they may wanna pop into a department and ask some questions for some some of the staff. They may wanna stop by the senior center, they may want to me to take them around town and show them different aspects of the town. And they're gonna be around, but they're gonna have the official kickoff at six, here, right here in this room. So the public can be here and ask questions and interact, um, but that's at six o'clock in the evening. But they'll be around throughout the whole day, they said they do wanna spend the whole day here.
Very good, it's gonna be a great opportunity to have them here. And I look forward to having that kickoff meeting. Yes, it was changed from ten o'clock today till um February first, Thursday, February first, at six P M. Because there was a lot of concerned employees and residents about the availability of being able to be a part of this meeting. So we changed the meeting to accommodate uh as many people as possible. Unfortunately, we can't accommodate everybody because, you know, some people work at nights, some people work at different schedules. So we try to hold it at a time where as many people can attend as possible. Um, so that's what we're trying to do now. Um, so we did hear the residents, we did hear the employees, that ten o'clock was not gonna work very well for them, so we changed it. So, that's why that time was changed. Um, do you have anything else, Ray?
I will also mention um uh to the board that the governor's proposed budget and cherry sheet numbers came out today. Um, you can take a look at them, it's still very fluid, still very early on. Um, you know, some of the the significant ones, um, for for the school district, for Quabon, uh, Quabog. Um, you know, the um, the overall rural, uh, the regional transportation. Uh, if those numbers hold, um, that that would be a a significant increase in in regional transportation for, uh, on the reimbursements uh side of things. So, you know, there's, there's a potential there um for, you know, up to, you know, a half, almost a half a million dollars. Uh, in additional money uh to to Quabog, about four hundred and forty thousand. Um, so, I mean, if that, if that's, if that's true, that'd be great for them. Um, again, it's still early, the House has still gotta, you know, submit theirs, Senate's gotta do theirs, and then they have the conference. Um, so hopefully, uh, some numbers hold true. Looks like uh on the, on the, on the town side, um, a moderate increase, um, very moderate. Um, increase uh from last year, nothing, nothing crazy.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I'd just like to point out that Jim mentioned possibly saving fifteen thousand dollars in premiums with Maya, right?
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, this is why we have another three years with Jim. Because he's getting grants, but then he's also able to do these analysis projects where he can save us money. Um, just day-to-day and day-to-day expenses. Which I don't know that any of us would have the time to dig into this stuff to the depth and level that he can do. So, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome, thank you. Um, one other thing that I wanna also uh mention, and thanks, Ray, for bringing it up. Capital planning had its first meeting this week. So I know that the chair had had indicated that. Capital planning met for the first time this week. Um, we're gonna be sending out a um, a memo to all departments as well as forms for capital planning. Um, and we're gonna give them enough time, that memo will be going out early next week. Um, it's gonna, you know, tell them exactly what we're looking for, the forms, so that they can all be uniform. Uh, for, you know, for us to submit them to capital planning so that we can come up with our our capital plan and ultimately a capital budget. Um, so this, this capital plan uh is going to be for, you know, four years. Or, you know, with the first year, you know, being the the budget there for for us right here. So it's a total five-year capital plan that we're gonna put together. Um, and it's, it's, was really exciting to to meet with everybody, uh, to see what other communities are doing. Like the chairman had indicated, we're gonna, you know, our goal is to prioritize projects, right? And we're gonna come up, come up with a rating criteria, a rating criteria for departments. So, um, so that departments, it's fair and equitable. So as, you know, as the capital planning committee uh meets, you know, the rating criteria that we talked about potentially. You know, does it have an impact on public safety, number one? That's the biggest impact, if they're gonna have to impact public safety, uh, and, you know, most residents, that's a priority, okay? Is it gonna have an impact on possible economic development? You know, could a project that we see spur some economic development in the downtown district? We're gonna look at that. If if there's, that that would have a level of priority. Uh, does it have an impact to seniors or to 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 middle-aged people? Uh, that, you know, may be looking to, um, you know, relocate to town? Um, you know, that would have an impact. So we're looking at ways in which we can prioritize projects. Um, at, uh, based on criteria that would have the biggest impact to the town residents, right? That's the most important thing, biggest impact to town residents. Um, so that everybody can feel some level of wealth in in benefit towards the town, because it's their tax dollars. Um, so we're, we're working on that. Uh, we're looking at identifying revenue sources to fund this. So whether it be a state or federal grant, uh, that we can go after, then we're gonna go after it. So if we have a project, and this just came up, you know, today, you know, I was talking about, you know, okay, green communities is coming up, right? We're gonna, we're gonna apply for the next round of green communities. We just finished a project with Steve Duff, two hundred thousand dollar grant. What's our next two hundred thousand dollars we're gonna go after? Uh, is it, you know, is it some type of weatherization at the senior center? Is it, you know, a potentially a heating system or heating components uh in one of the buildings? Heat pump, something, some type of project that's gonna have a big benefit to the town that will help us move us forward. But there's two hundred thousand dollars out there that we're gonna go after. Um, you know, that that's out there. So that that can be identified as a revenue source. You know, maybe there's a federal grant from this E D A spin-off stuff, um, you know, that we could identify that could address some things. Um, you know, there's a whole host, One Stop for Growth just came out again. So there's, there's best practices, community compact, there's, there's all these different grants out there, pocket, buckets of money. That we can identify, okay, well, we can use these grants to fund these capital projects. Instead of offsetting, you know, either, you know, having it always taken on the chin with the taxpayers. Or, or, you know, possibly borrowing. We don't have to do that if we can go after these grants. So we're gonna try to do it as methodically and as strategically as possible. Identify these things so that we can continue to invest capitally uh in the town and responsibly. To try to co-wess with our our capital improvement plan. I don't know, Ray, did I get all the, those points, or did you?
I covered it all.
Okay.
You're pretty thorough.
You're the best.
Very. Well, thank you very much, lots of information. Um, good job with capital plan and planning. Um, it's great to have them joining the town as another team. Um, we definitely needed that for a long time. So, I highly recommend all the departments, if they have things and that they need, that's gonna be coming up. Uh, say a fire truck that's gonna cost us seven hundred thousand dollars, you might wanna plan with capital planning about that. Cruisers.
Slightly more than that now.
Cruises, make sure you identify that you're gonna need a cruiser.
I think you should just get him a horse and buggy.
A pump cart? Uh, all right, so, great job. Um, so moving on, uh, are you all set now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, did anybody have any questions for Mr. Ferrari? No, no, no. Okay. All right, new business, any new business?
No.
No, sir.
No. Okay. Uh, old business, any old business?
No.
No.
No. No. Okay. Uh, correspondence, the assessors sent us a letter. And they would like us to announce that Alan Bishop, who is our third-party independent assessor. Will be doing property inspections during the month of February. So if you see uh Mr. Bishop walking around, uh, that's what he's gonna be doing, he's doing a, an evaluation of the properties. Okay? Uh, real estate abatement applications are due by February first, two thousand twenty-four. And exemption, exemption applications are due by April first, two thousand twenty-four. Why is it April Fool's Day? What's that, you don't get a? Surprise, you don't get an exemption, just kidding.
Can I just ask one thing about the uh, the assessors? If they could forward me his info, what he's gonna be driving and everything, because we're gonna get a million calls.
Yes, you are.
Yep.
Yep. If you could just make sure that happens. Okay. Good catch, chief, thank you. Um, so, lastly, uh, we just wanna make sure that the assessors, uh, the reappointment for Betty Jo. Is for our February twenty-second meeting on the agenda. Okay. Right, so that was that, that was our correspondence. Um, comments and concerns, do you have any comments and concerns?
I'll just say two interesting things from the M M A. Um, one of them was a vendor at the trade show, they do A I. They use A I to do transcriptions of things like Zoom videos. So you can upload your Zoom video and it'll give you a timestamped transcription of the entire meeting. So if you wanna jump ahead to, you know, item thirteen on the, on the, um, in the meeting, you can easily do that. And then get the transcription. Um, and then they'll also give you a summary of the meeting that you can use for minutes. So it's pretty cool, I don't know what it costs, but it was kinda neat to hear about. Yeah, so it's something I'll, you know, we'll look into.
Put it on your capital planning.
Yeah. The other, so I went to, one of the seminars was municipal law updates, and there's an interesting thing. Um, uh, you know, our meet, open meeting laws are sort of stuck a little bit in the past. Um, and the interesting thing that was brought up is, you know, we have to advertise for public hearings like two weeks, two weeks in advance, right? And newspaper that's locally read, right? Well, the problem is newspapers are going away.
Nobody reads newspapers.
And they don't read them. So the example was Natick, they either have the Metro West News or they have the Boston Globe. They don't have a local Natick paper. So, um, if they put it in the Globe, it's very expensive. And it goes to a bunch of people that don't care. You know, the people in Revere get the Globe, what do, what do they care about Natick? So, this is becoming a problem. Logistically, it's a problem, how, how do you get this, these two-week notices out in an effective way? So there's talk of, you know, maybe allowing towns to post these on their own website. Or maybe have a state.
Social media blast.
Yeah, a state website where you could go and find out any public hearings you wanted to. But some central repository of these things and get away from the newspapers. Jim made the comment that newspapers don't really wanna lose that business.
Of course not.
But the problem is it's not effective anymore. I mean, we're lucky we have the Ware River News or the Reminder. But if they shut down, what, you know, what do we do, the Telegram or the Republican?
You would have to pay either the Telegram or the Republican, and they're big money.
What was it, fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred.
Compared to like two hundred in the, in the Ware River News.
So, when we used to put legal notices in in the, in the Republican, I mean, you're talking about, you know, twelve hundred bucks, fifteen hundred bucks, depending on the size of the ad.
Yeah.
I, geez.
And the Republicans reaching huge amounts of people that don't care about what's happening in Warren, right? We need to target people in our town, really, I mean, that's it, so.
Well, even if we could post it in certain places around town.
Yeah.
You know, like we did.
Yeah.
The library, the, you know.
So the state's gotta work on these laws. I mean, even having remote meetings has been a, some, you know, some progress. You know, there's, um, I think remote meetings are here to stay, so.
Yeah.
But there's some other things that could be improved and streamlined and brought into the modern age.
Cool.
Did you have something? I thought you had a comment, I'll comment.
Hmm, I had a thought.
Yeah.
No comments.
He's thinking of a future business venture now.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
All right, that's my M M A report, so.
Very good, thank you. Um, and anybody else have any um comments and concerns? Mr. Chandra?
Joe Conrad.
So I have to say, if it's about Board of Health related issues.
Covered it.
You, yeah, you should probably go through, there was a handle in the Board of Health.
All right, this is what I wanna say.
All right.
The West Warren Community Hall is now up for sale.
Oh, no.
Let's hope some foresighted engineer will take a look at it and be creative. Maybe even restore some of it.
How much would they ask for, did you know?
I didn't notice.
Which building is this?
Community Center, West Warren Community Center.
It's across from the senior center.
It's missing part of the version.
Markings.
Yeah, it's, I was on a committee way, way back to try and restore it, and it was just, it was hard, it wasn't worth it. It's beautiful inside, there's a bowling alley, there's a little pool hall area.
I have some castles in the air, but nothing relevant for realistically.
Yeah.
I, I do have a comment. I'm really concerned.
Oh, one second, you, you all set, Mr. Chandra? Okay.
I'm, I'm very concerned of, well, our first item today about this, um, people living in very bad conditions.
Hmm, it's disturbing.
I think this is just one of many.
Could it is?
So, I'm, I'm, I'm.
It's just the beginning, this is the top, this is the top ones, top offenders.
I'm the top three right now.
There's, there's more, and they need to be dealt with. And be forewarned, if you're one of those properties, it ends. We're done with it, Board of Health's coming after you, building department's coming after you. And we will support them by all means.
Absolutely.
Because we are not gonna have residents living in subpar conditions or dangerous conditions. Because somebody is a absentee landlord or doesn't wanna take the responsibility and just wants to collect some checks from tenants. You know, fix up your properties, get them right, and pay your taxes. Because they could tell you right now, if you owe fifty-six thousand dollars on your property tax, you're probably gonna be losing your house soon, because we're done with that. The town, everybody else has to pay their taxes.
Yeah.
You better stop paying your taxes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy with the Board of Health and especially you, that, the way you handle it. I think you're doing a wonderful job. And, um, a lot of people are gonna need, need you in the future.
My thing is just take care of people.
Yeah, very good, I appreciate it, thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Anybody else have any comments and concerns? Good thing, Ray.
Yeah, Ray Capaco, uh, just glad that you were able to come to terms for a three-year contract extension for our town administrator. And, uh, appreciate all the work he's done for the town, and just wanted to say that publicly.
So he's worth keeping?
He's worth keeping. Thank you.
It's general consensus, we were trying to get somebody to speak badly about him, but nobody would, everybody just has positive things about him.
You invited, you invited earlier for comments about why we shouldn't have renegotiated a contract with him.
It is quiet.
And I was waiting for you to say, is I don't have any positive comments, and I thought I'd better just wait till it's time for comments.
Well, well, thank you very much about that, and I know he appreciates it.
Thank you, Ray. You're welcome.
Anything else?
Just one more thing.
Ray, you all done?
I'm all set.
Okay.
The next thing that we're gonna hit on is the railroad ties.
Oh, yes.
Yep, those need to be getting out of there too, and we've.
I've called, um, Maurice O'Connell, uh, that, that's the gentleman that we spoke with, uh, over the summer. I've, um, now since emailed him, um, so, uh, so I'll follow up again with him, so.
Yeah, because right now they're leaching underground, and eventually it's gonna make it into the.
And it's becoming a hazard because people are stealing them.
They are stealing and a pile is starting to fall. And God forbid a kid goes by there and it does fall.
Yeah.
Well, fall on the person who's pulling them off, right?
Not necessarily, they could loosen it enough.
Yeah.
Where somebody goes over there, walks by and it does fall.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, plus, I don't think all those railroad ties belong to the town. Uh, plus, I don't think all those railroad ties belong to the town ward. There's too many piles in the wood up here by the, um, yeah, the railroad tra, station here is growing by leaps and bounds. So they're bringing them in.
They're using it as a staging area then.
Right.
That's excellent.
Yeah, if you can get on them about that, right, let them know, we, we understand it's their property and it's their ties, but you gotta move on, you know? If they're selling them, sell them, get rid of them.
Well, they're also a prime target for firework. Because those things, when they light, they go.
Oh, yeah.
And they probably can't be put out, right?
They're like tires.
Yeah.
Well, that would take care of the problem of being there anymore.
Yeah, but keep Adam tied up.
Yeah.
Adam's like, yeah, can we not do that? All right, anything else, sir?
I'm all set.
All right, anybody else have any comments and concerns? Anybody on Zoom for comments and concerns?
Nope.
No? All right, so no more comments and concerns. The next meeting is February first, two thousand twenty-four at six P M. That is the master plan kickoff uh meeting. Uh, so if anybody's interested in that, please attend, we'd love to hear your input. And that is February first, two thousand four at six P M. And that is a Thursday night, uh, we hope to see you there. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihawker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.